Thank you. Not yet, but when we get there. Trying to see how I get more people on my view. I see three. Do it more.
Thirteen P M. I'm at eighteen it says.
I have three.
Mayor, I have my devices rolling, and if you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening. This is the City of Morro Bay City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, June eighth, twenty twenty-one, and it's five thirty P M. This meeting is being held via teleconference. And I will go ahead and ask the clerk if she can establish a form for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis? Councilmember Addis is here. I see. Councilmember Gordon. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Davis, I do see is here. He's present. Um, Councilmember Heller.
Here, thank you.
And we are heading.
Present, thank you. We do have a call. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order this evening. And ask that in your own way, you take a moment of silence to remember those in need and better suffering in our country and world today. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back. With that, I'll ask if we can have our flag displayed. And Councilmember Heller, thank you for leading us in the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, humanism, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. This meeting is being held pursuant to section three of Executive Order N twenty-nine dash twenty issued by Governor Meissen on March seventeenth, twenty twenty. This meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on cable channel twenty and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting even contact that could spread the COVID nineteen virus, Veterans Hall will not be open this evening for the meeting. COVID participation information during public comment will be displayed on the screen by the city clerk, and he may access in a couple of ways at the appropriate time. With that again, welcome. I'll ask our city attorney, Mr. Emar, do we have any close session reports, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No close session or any reports today.
Thank you so much for that. That brings us to Mayor and councilmembers' reports. If we could this evening, let's start with Councilmember Heller. Sir, any reports from you, sir?
Yes, I do. I'd like to announce a event that will be sponsored by the City and Morro Bay Beautiful. This event will take place on Saturday, September eleventh, at our community center. It will combine the twenty of Echo New York's World Trade Center building. It will celebrate the hundred year anniversary of Morro Bay and present an original theme, all the great things about Morro Bay by first Eric Dowd. This include a kind of alien of an original work of Mr. Dowd, which depicts all the girls of Morro Bay. This work of art was commissioned by Morro Bay Beautiful. It will be the basis for the production of Morro Bay. Watch out this one here, which I want to show you, I think. This is the puzzle. If you can't see it because of the lights, but Dowd has created works of art and visited its offices, which are sold all over the country. Uh, the original puzzle about Morro Bay, they sold in stores here in Morro Bay. I was in his studio in Southland, a children's playground. And the movies, Asco's. Uh, Mr. Dowd has made puzzles of many cities, and we're very excited about building up this puzzle. So we hope you can all join us on September eleventh at the community center. There will be no social distancing requirements at that time, but whatever the requirements are, the event is going to go forward. I believe it's been from two o'clock to four o'clock in the afternoon, so the market for September eleventh. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Appreciate that important event and your recognition of it. That, I'll ask Councilmember Addis, do you have a report this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one name to announce, then. I was able to attend HAB as council liaison on June third. Um, some good news, they reported that there's lots of eelgrass in the bay, which is wonderful, especially for those who know the struggle that we've had with eelgrass. Uh, someone also reported that there's some halibut that they were able to catch. There are sailing lessons open for kids and adults, starting through the Morro Bay Yacht Club. And this is the first time in quite a while um that sailing lessons will be able to be offered due to COVID. So that's at N V Y C dot lessons at gmail dot com. And HAB will take a break for July. They won't be meeting again until the first Thursday in August. And finally, there are some exciting things going on at the Maritime Museum, um, including the marine swap meet is coming up at the end of June. And there's a new movie that you can purchase at the Maritime Museum with some locals that you'll probably recognize. Um, and then I also just want to think HAB for the rich discussion they have. We are had at their meeting. We have an agenda item uh coming up tonight around harbor funding. And I'm going to appreciate the folks that are on the HAB that had a very rich discussion, brought forward a number of ideas for funding the HAB. Um, I think we'll get to hear about that later on the agenda. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Very much appreciate that. And Councilmember Davis, anything to report this evening?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember. Um, I want to recognize tonight one of Morro Bay's outstanding citizens, King Green. King is treasured for Morro Bay Open Space Alliance. And he's been one of the primary fundraisers for preservation of Eagle Rock. And both uh recorded the full announcement in April that preserves Eagle Rock in its natural state and provides public access in perpetuity. So I want to thank King especially for working with us about. And Project Surf Camp is back this year. Project Surf Camp is one of the city's partners. The big program is surfing and other ocean activities to build self-confidence in people who have special needs. It is heavily supported by local volunteers. It takes place this summer at Colton Beach. It's supported by an annual fundraiser. It takes place Friday, June twenty-fifth, from twelve P M. to four P M. In the Movement for Life Parking Lot on Eight Eighty Shasta Avenue, across the street from the library. Uh, the fundraiser is important because this is where the advocates donate to to present. It will feature a free potluck, tri-tip barbecame, and the opportunity for everyone to buy raffle tickets for great prizes provided by local merchants. There are several ways that you can support Project Surf Camp. You can buy raffle tickets. You can donate cash or raffle prizes. You can donate realigned sweat suits. This is an important event to help smaller people. It can help by attending the free barbecame. Again, that's June twenty-fifth, from noon to four P M. And the parking lot behind Morro Bay Drive, across the street from the library. And that's all my instruments.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Gordon, anything to report this evening? Hearing nothing. Perhaps Dana, is she muted?
It does appear so.
Councilmember Gordon, you are muted.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Wow.
Welcome.
I thought I was pushing on that button and apparently not. Um, I I have the pleasure of traveling to our state capitol over the weekend to uh to attend a memorial service for a dear friend's husband who has passed on. What it reminded me of was uh living there in the nineteen eighties as a Senate fellow and then seeing what Sacramento looks like now. It's like a completely different place, so much bigger and busier. And I thought it was big and busy then, so it was a very interesting time to be there. Um, I also wanted to uh throw a tip of the hat to my current Airbnb guest uh who has managed to memorize all the trails on Black Hill already. She's a big hiker. Her name is Heidi, and she'll be with me till the end of the month. So it's been interesting to hear her stories of what she sees out there as she's hiking all over. Um, and I'm glad to have her.
Well, hopefully you're hiking right behind her. Thank you for that report. I have nothing further to report this evening. Um, Mr. Collins, please. Any report from you, sir?
Yes, sir. Coming up here.
There you are.
Review. All right. Was anticipating you were going to have an update. My apologies. Um, so I just had a couple of things, and I was going to turn it over to our water reclamation facility team for a quick update on traffic stuff. So we, the council reviewed the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, or actually twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two proposed budget uh last month, and it's coming back for final review of June twenty-second. So just wanted to make the community aware of that. You can find information on that proposed budget on the city website at W W W dot Morro Bay C A dot J O B. Uh, we are going through plans to reopen City Hall in the public parks and community development building um beginning on Monday, June twenty-second. It will be open for five hours, Monday through Thursday, so look out for that. Uh, we're working on plans for opening community center and senior center aiming more likely for July. And we've got a lot of questions about having council meetings and advisory board meetings in person. We're aiming to be able to provide a hybrid meeting situation for both in-person and on Zoom. A G P is a amazing partner providing broadcasts for various meetings. Is working on a technological solution um that we're hoping will get us up and going in August or September of this year. So more information will come on that as we move on from A G P. And I also wanted to let you know to Paul and Nico, who's our core engineers. He's our construction manager for the pipeline component or community system component of the Wharf project. Take a look, Paul.
Thank you, sir. The Morro Bay City Council and residents of Morro Bay, Morro Bay staff, uh, thanks they do for letting us come on. And try to keep this brief, so plenty of questions that we can uh take those. I'm also joined by Sarah Rosetto, who is, uh, leads our outreach team. So just um, you told me for one second, I'll show the screen. And we've got a brief presentation um that uh we gave last week at our first Friday meeting. So we do these uh, we do these updates every uh first Friday of every month, so whatever happens along. And um, when I'm done here, Sarah will remind me what next for this is the first Friday of July. It actually is the fourth of July holiday. So looking at one of the reasons we wanted to come tonight and update the council was the public uh about the construction. I'm sure folks have seen uh the April crews all over town. They're making great progress on the pipeline project. They're working in multiple places around town, but they're still um, the places we want to discuss tonight have to do with pipeline construction. Port Town Road. Um, I know there's a crew working between the block and South Bay Boulevard. They're pressing that pipeline down towards South Bay Boulevard. They're making great progress. They've been there for a while. The road is fully closed in that area. Um, but the businesses now are roads leading down to the open. Port Town is fully open between the uh pipeline construction crew number two. And that's the picture you see on the screen. They're on Port Town Road, moving southeast toward Kennedy Way. Um, the northbound detour right now at Kennedy Way, if you are coming up that way, is around Main Street and Main Street uh and back toward Highway one. Um, we'll talk of the next two items here we've got. We want to talk about first one is the waterline relocation work across Kennedy Way and then tunneling preparation at Lost Tuna Street. So um what we wanted to update everyone on is we will be doing that construction starting next week. Uh, the original plan was still Monday, but I spoke to the uh, the project manager from Anvil, and he's uh anticipating that it may be uh Wednesday before they're in. Uh, the road will be open in the daytime, as you can see it here. Um, during this this work, it'll be plated, the intersection will be plated. One of the reasons we have to do the work in this manner is the waterline is right in the travel lane here in the direction we're looking, and it crosses the intersection. So we are going to be doing this work, the digging and the pipeline work in HAB. Some intersection, two phases. Um, the northbound traffic on Port Town will remain all times, going from the roundabout toward Main Street. And southbound traffic will be detoured by Main Street and Main Street. So the reverse of the detour that you're seeing now. I mean, HAB, that I'll show the next slide. Uh, we're currently coordinating access, access for businesses and emergency services. Those resources will uh put out for this construction this week uh to the, to the affected businesses in the area. And one of the reasons that we're moving at seven to do this is maybe the businesses closed at that time, and traffic is greatly reduced uh at that time. So I'll, I'll kind of go slow on this so that everyone can absorb what, what uh we're going to see. So starting at seven P M. maybe next week, you're going for approximately two weeks. Port Town Road, um, going toward the roundabout from Main Street will be fully closed. Going in this direction from the driveway from the shopping plaza at the corner of Kennedy and Port Town. Um, and uh, so we'll have signage that will ask folks not to go this way if anyone would try to cut through but use the detour. Uh, access to these businesses, which I believe are all closed at that time. But the business is here, but that is the access that will be permitted in Port Town Road. We cannot send through traffic into a private, private business. This is phase one. As you can see, Port Town Road remains fully open in this direction uh and, and going toward Main Street from the detours here are shown in phase two of the construction. Uh, it's much less impactful in this area. And Port Town Road remains fully open, but will be detoured, uh, coming from Main Street toward the roundabout will be detoured on Kennedy Way during the second phase of this work. And as we said, always from the roundabout going toward Main Street, the uh, the Port Town Road will one reason that this, this construction takes uh two weeks is one, it's nighttime construction launch shifts are shorter. So the midnight obviously a little less, about half of the working day. And that, that April's usually right now. And um, and so because the work in the night, the work is a little slower. And it would be if we were able to do this during the day and just have a free rain and last um, and probably one of the more interesting aspects of this pipeline construction is the tunneling under the roundabout. We're tunneling under the roundabout, the pipes and the casing pipe ladder, and some people call it a sleeve so that we can keep the roundabout open during construction. Um, unfortunately, this requires us to fully close Lost Tuna in that late in this intersection. If you go out there now, this, this big machine for the doors and the barriers are parked over in Lost Tuna. They pilot, they machine fire in that area. And this is so that we can dig down and retrieve the tunneling machine uh that we'll be tunneling under the roundabout. As always, we are coordinating access for residences, businesses, and emergency services during this time. So with that, I kind of breezed through that pretty quickly. Sir, did I forget anything? To mention?
I will just note that our first Friday virtual community meeting for this project um for July is actually only held on the second Friday, so it's posted on MorroBayDVR dot com. We're holding it on uh Friday, July ninth, so just a week later, from eight to nine thirty A M. And there's registration information available.
And then that is that presentation's posted also on MorroBayDVR dot com. Anyone that has any questions, just look at it and you jump over there and send us a question.
Thank you, Paul and Sarah. Very much appreciate the update. Um, very important information and glad we're going to have the second Tuesday meeting to further educate our business community and community about what's going on. So thanks for your work and thanks for updating us.
Mayor, I need to clarify, sorry about that. Uh, the City Hall offices and planning and public personnel department building will be open on Monday, June twenty-first, next month, twenty seconds. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. With that, that will move us to presentations. Um, tonight with us, we have Ms. Paula Carr uh from the N double A C P of San Luis Obispo County. We do have a proclamation from the City Council honoring Juneteenth Day. Um, Dana, can we bring Ms. Carr in and promote her to uh being live with us?
Well, um, you are able to unmute yourself and turn on your video if you would like. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Good evening, Paula, and welcome. I'm going to read the proclamation from the Morro Bay City Council. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay proclaiming Saturday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one as Juneteenth Day in the City of Morro Bay. And it reads as follows, whereas since June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, the American celebration known as Juneteenth has historically been observed as the end of the institution of slavery of our great nation. And whereas Juneteenth embodies the indomitable human spirit of the past, the present, and all time. And whereas the celebration of Juneteenth gives us all the opportunity to rededicate ourselves to the true American spirit and to strive for a more perfect union. And whereas we are citizens who wish to secure the blessings of freedom, justice, and equality for all in this great country of ours. And whereas the collaboration of the community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, local businesses, and local government demonstrates a shared commitment to being part of the solution and acknowledging the importance of strength through unity. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Morro Bay is proclaiming the third Saturday in June as Juneteenth Day and recommends all citizens of the City of Morro Bay join in recognizing the importance of this great day. And thank you, Paula, for being here. Would you like to just say a few words?
I would. Thank you, Mayor Heading. Um, good evening, councilmembers, and I also want to thank Dawn for making this possible. Um, I really appreciate all of your assistance. The, the words in the proclamation that you just read are intensely moving, and they bear great weight. They are historically rooted, and they are also fresh every day that we wake up and turn on the news and we find that we are still a work in progress. And I want to thank you on behalf of the San Luis Obispo County branch of the N double A C P for demonstrating your support of the Juneteenth celebration. It's, it's interesting that it took almost two and a half years for the proclamation to finally be read as far west as Texas. Of course, this was early days in, in our, in our union. But it had been read, it had been signed by Abraham Lincoln a long time before, and it took a while for it to reach different populations across the country. And this, Juneteenth, the nineteenth of June marks the official sort of last reading, when the word was completely out and the slaves realized that they had in fact been freed. These actions are, are far more than symbolic. They, they give hope and strength to our commitment to the essential shared humanity that we have. And you know, we all just joined each other in saying the pledge of allegiance, which includes those words with liberty and justice for all. And it is so important to have these moments where we share that recognition as, as a society and as members of a government and community. And so with that, I want to thank you again for, for issuing the proclamation. And I would also like to uh encourage you to become a member of N double A C P if you aren't already. And also take a look at the website, which is uh juneteenthslow dot com. And you will be able to see all of the activities that are scheduled for the evening of the eighteenth and the late afternoon and evening of Juneteenth on the nineteenth of June. So I, again, I thank you sincerely for this, for this great honor.
Well, thank you for those great words, and thank you for being here this evening. Thanks for your leadership um on the San Luis Obispo County N double A C P. We, we appreciate that. I'm going to repeat the website. It's juneteenth S L O dot com. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you.
And again, thank you um for allowing us to, to um deliver the proclamation and recognize this important day in Morro Bay.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Yes, you too, sir.
Thank you. With that, that moves us to general public comment. Um, this is public comment for items on the agenda for which you cannot stay and you'd like to speak now or for any general items that you'd like to raise with regard to the City of Morro Bay. Information is displayed on the screen as to how to access public comment. Two ways to do that, via the Zoom webinar. Um, be sure if you access via the Zoom webinar that you use the raise hand symbol in order to be recognized. And then also you may call via telephone with the phone number presented on the screen. And again, be sure to, to dial star nine to raise your hand so that the clerk can recognize you, and we can allow you to speak during public comment. So again, this is general public comment for items on the agenda for which you cannot stay and would like to comment now or for anything generally you'd like to comment on with regard to our city. And uh, we do have a three minute clock for public comment. So with that, Anthony, I'll go ahead and open up the queue and ask if we have any public comments, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do see raised hands in the queue. I see Alyssa Bright with her hand raised.
Okay.
Okay, Alyssa, you should be unmuted.
I'm here.
Alyssa?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, Alyssa, welcome.
Wonderful. Okay, um, I have been listening in on the meeting, and it sounds like we all have a common goal of a safe and happy community, and I'm happy to hear that. Um, I just wanted to put in my two cents tonight about the um, the ongoing project at the roadway inn of the rehabilitation center. I have concerns about it going in and um being a big draw on emergency services for the community. I would like to point out that this is a for-profit business that's going in there, not a state-run facility. It is a for-profit business that would be putting a draw on emergency services for the rest of the community. Um, I have concerns. Um, I have concerns about it being in a residential area. Um, I don't feel like it's safe. I feel like it's somewhat irresponsible to even consider a residential area for a rehabilitation center. Um, and so I would like the city council, I urge the city council to do some more research before we allow this rehabilitation center to go in, in a residential area and to be a draw on um, emergency services and other services for our community. I am in um, I am in support of a rehabilitation center. I am not in support of it being in a residential area. I think there is a solution that could be found where a rehabilitation center could be in Morro Bay out of a residential area. And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see phone number ending in one seven eight. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you.
Welcome.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi there.
Can you hear me?
Yes, huh?
Okay, perfect. Um, hello, my name is Andrea Odeba from the We Are the Care Initiative. Our world has started shifting towards a new kind of normal, which brings an overwhelming sense of positivity and hope for the future. Now is the time to focus on all that needs rebuilding. Before the pandemic, quality and affordable childcare was hard to come by in Slow County. Now the situation is all the more dire. We have lost over one thousand licensed childcare slots and more are still threatened today. Persistent financial and mental hardships for families and children exist in Slow County as a result of the pandemic as well. Local funding allocations as part of the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one offer a unique opportunity to support those in our community that have been most disproportionately affected by COVID. Among those, among these are families with young children. Children under the age of six represent five percent of the population of Slow County, which is why we urge the City of Morro Bay to invest five percent of your ARPA allocations in support of our youngest residents and their families. Strong families create a bolstered economy which strengthens the community, in which infants and toddlers can learn, grow, and thrive. The We Are the Care Initiative at First Five Slow County, uh, in collaboration with a coalition of local partners, offers this city a suite of eight proposed strategies for, for these one-time ARPA investments. These strategies focus on strengthening local systems of support in childcare, mental health, and stable housing that will help keep our community, our economy, our families, and our children on the road to recovery. Details surrounding these strategies will be submitted to city council members in the next week. These strategy, strategies include strengthening the local childcare system infrastructure, family resource center operations and facilities, access to childcare through vouchers, small business grants for childcare programs, workforce development for childcare professionals, childcare facility capacity, mental and behavioral health supports for children and families, family housing, and family housing stabilization. The time to act is now. The pandemic has created a mountain of empty loss and worry for families, whether they are facing health concerns, loss of childcare, and early education opportunities, social isolation, or job loss, and underemployment. We urge you to set aside five percent of the American Rescue Plan Act funding provided to your city government as an investment in the first five years of life. For ways to get involved with We Are the Care, please contact First Five Slow County or go to www dot firstfiveslow dot org. Thank you so much for your time and for your continued support of the young children and families in your community.
Thank you, Andrea. Um, Anthony, next comment, please.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I see Erica Crawford with her hand up.
Okay.
Okay, Erica, you should be unmuted.
Welcome, Erica.
Hi there, uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. This is Erica from the Chamber. Thank you for giving me a moment to speak tonight, and I'm thrilled to be bringing good news. After what's been a truly trying year, we at the Chamber are excited to share that Morro Bay is back and better than ever. We will be kicking off reopening with a two-part series called Shop, Sip, and Stroll. These community events will start next Wednesday, June sixteenth, at five thirty PM in the Embarcadero Economic Center, with the second event on Wednesday, June thirtieth, in the downtown. Our new membership director, Lindsay Hanson, has created an experience designed to bring residents of Morro Bay and the greater Slow County region together to reconnect with one another and with business owners who are their neighbors, who have worked so hard to keep their doors open and their lights on during the pandemic. Community members are encouraged to check out the Facebook event for Shop, Sip, and Stroll at the Morro Bay Chamber page, or to go to morrowchamber.org/events/communitymixers for details about participating businesses and beverage sponsors and the event map. We will be placing musicians throughout the walking route and hope to have some vacant commercial storefronts open to invite aspiring entrepreneurs to envision themselves opening a business in these spaces. This is a free community event and we'll have some fun complimentary stickers proclaiming that Morro Bay is back in twenty twenty-one and better than ever. We are always aware of the fact that Morro Bay has four distinct economic centers, and so in July, we are planning a membership mixer in Morro Bay, and we have been highlighting businesses in the Quintana District on our Facebook Live Property Walk and Talk series to ensure that the public is aware that these businesses are open during the pipeline construction project. Thank you. Have a great meeting.
Thank you, Erica. Appreciate that. Anthony, next public comment.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I see R. Tyler Smith with their hand raised.
Okay.
Okay.
Hello.
Welcome.
Good evening. You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, hey, my name's Tyler Smith. I'm a resident of Morro Bay. Um, lived here for about twenty years, have four kids in the area, and I'm also a firefighter here on the Central Coast. Um, I'm calling in, in opposition to the um, proposed rehab facility here in town. Um, I'm not against rehab facilities, but I am against this one because of the size and the location, um, right in the heart of a residential area and a facility of this size, twenty-six to forty people on a sixty-day plan means there'll be a couple hundred new people into our area in uh, within a year. So the consequences of this are, could be drastic. Um, the draw on our emergency services, I, I believe will be great. Um, the types of calls that we run on these facilities, um, definitely draw on departments, city, and um, PD and fire drastically. Types of calls we see in these facilities are overdoses, psychotic breaks from detoxing off the benzos and things of that nature. We see um, assaults and you know, it's, it's uh, it can be a big draw on the facilities or on the uh, emergency services. Um, and I'm just trying to raise awareness to you guys so that you understand what this size of a facility is gonna do to our area. Um, I am really against it, and I know how many people have reached out to you from this community. You've had over a hundred and twenty emails, negative emails, asking you to not do this, to not let this facility come in, with good reason, just the size and location is not good. I really urge you to listen to your constituents and vote no on this. Um, also, uh, you know, there's, there's, there's gonna be, there could be consequences for the size of the facility. It could negatively impact our area, and uh, you know, I really want you, hope you listen to your people and really think about the consequences of something like this in our area. The consequences that it could have on the community, um, the drawdown on our emergency services, and um, I know that the community is not for this. I know that there's a lot of us speaking out. I really hope you listen to us, and um, I just, I'm just urging you to vote no. So I appreciate your time, and uh, please listen to us, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. I see April Hook with her hand up. Hello? April, you should be unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi. Um, yeah, my name's April Hook, and I too am against the roadway inn rehab setting. Um, I've lived in Morro Bay for over forty-five years and raised two boys here. Uh, love our community and love all the people here. Um, but I would like to specifically draw your attention to the idea that this won't be the last facility of its kind to come into our communities. Um, you guys are our guardians and stewards of our resources, and I'd like to argue that according to a bill, SB thirteen twenty-two passed in two thousand and six and then later revised, that you as our community members actually do have the right to designate where these facilities go, and strongly encourage you to look at where it's going today. It is not ideal. You need to set us up for the future for better decisions. Um, I'd like to strongly also encourage you to review the comprehensive research that Ashley Smith has provided you. Uh, from what I understand, she sent you guys each, each of you council members, John Heding, Dawn Addis, Jeff Haller, Robert Davis, and Laurel Barton, each of you have access to a notebook that has tabs in it, um, with absolutely, um, you do seem to understand that she's got a lot of information in there that you should be listening to. She's done her due diligence in getting information that will undeniably provide you with enough to go on to make the best decision for our community. If you won't listen to her, then I'm gonna ask, who will you listen to? Ashley hardly has time for appealing something like this. She's not an activist. She's really an intelligent and informed citizen who has the best interest at heart for everyone in her community. Um, I'd like to encourage you to just make the right decision for us while you still can. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, next public comment, Anthony, please.
Uh, Mayor, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, thank you. I will close general public comment, bring it back to council. Um, we will be addressing those public comments, um, other than um, the two that didn't involve um, the proposed project when we get to item B dash uh, two.
Pardon me?
So at that time, we will consider that.
Mayor? This is Anthony from AGP Wright.
Yes.
I said that, a hand raised.
Okay.
Uh, would you like me to bring in Dave Smith then? He was.
Sure, I'll, I'll go ahead and reopen public comment then.
It happens, sometimes it's pretty rare, but it happened right after I said it, so.
Lot of problem.
Thank you, sir.
I'm trying to unmute. Are you on me now?
Yes, got it.
Okay. I, I'm a, a resident here in Morro Bay as well. Um, and when I listened in to the previous um, public meeting concerning this drug rehab facility, I believe that, that you received, you being the board, received counsel from legal counsel or somebody that said that basically you could not deny it, which I, I find difficult, but if that was my memory. And if that is the case, and I've been involved with environmental impact state reports and other projects through, through major construction projects, et cetera, and I, I've, I've had to work through these things with the local planning departments and commissions. If you can, if council says you cannot deny it, then at least put in enough restrictions that make it more friendly for the people. As I recall, they, they admitted that they don't have supervision in the evenings for their, for their guests, clients, so they can be out in the community. It, it, we need to put penalties in place that if they are found out outside of the facility, that is in effect endangering the community, and at that point in time, you should have the ability to pull their permit or pull the license, stop the project. So if you cannot say no, at least put in safeguards, significant safeguards. The problems with, that I've experienced and I've been around for way too long, that through halfway houses and other projects of this nature, the families that want to support them will come and move into the area, and then those people tend to stay. And that has unfortunately caused a, a, a degrading of the top property values, specifically the, the one that I'm most familiar with is, is up in the Creekside area of Sonoma, in Sonoma County, but I've, I've seen it firsthand. So please do what you can to limit the impacts that on the reasonable people that have moved here, built their lives here, supported the community, their children are here, there's three schools in the area. Please, please, please protect these children, protect these homeowners, protect citizens that are trying to do what's right, and do what you can do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anthony, do we have any other public comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Jeannie with her hand raised. Okay, Jeannie, you are unmuted.
Hi.
Welcome.
Taking my comment at the last minute. Um, I'm also against a rehab facility that is proposed this evening. Um, I feel like these are important facilities and they definitely serve a purpose. I know and love many people who have benefited from them. However, I feel like the private for-profit facilities that are run poorly can be a real detriment to the community. Also, the location is questionable as well as the, the services that will be required to provide for it. Um, I think if you really look into the people that are applying for this and get a good idea of what the other facilities that they have opened up in the past, and I believe they may have some presently, um, it's not what we want in Morro Bay. Um, I thank you for listening to my comments, and hopefully you guys really take everyone's comments into consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anthony, do we have any other um, votes in the queue?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
All right, thanks. I'll go ahead and reclose public comment after reopening it and um, bring it back to council again. We will address the comments regarding item B two during that time, and the others were public information. We appreciate that, and that will move us to um, our um, A consent agenda. Um, this is items A one through A five. Public comment is now open for items on the consent agenda only. Items A one through A five again, and Anthony, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. Anybody wishing to speak should do so now. Anybody in the queue, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I do see Betty Windholt with her hand raised.
Okay.
Okay, Betty, you should be unmuted.
Welcome, Betty.
This is Betty Windholt. Um, I have sent you a couple of emails regarding item A three, which is about the water equivalency units that are annually passed by Planning Commission Public Works and passed on to you. In light of the drought that's going on in California and the potential to be declared an emergency by the governor, um, I want to um, encourage you to modify the number of WEUs and or look at the balance of the WEUs that are being passed. And to summarize my emails, I would say in terms of the number, because we are only receiving five percent of our allotment from the state, um, and if that's five percent also of the buffer, that is only a couple of hundred acre feet when uh, the report states, states that we need eighteen to nineteen hundred acre feet per year, which is comparable to what we have in the San Luis reservoir. So I would hate to see us use up that buffer at the reservoir in one year when we may very well need it the following year, not knowing how long this drought may last. And so I would encourage you to um, reduce the number of WEUs, and at the same time, look at the composition, that do we really need more uh, commercial and single-family than we do multifamily? If we're committed to our um, allocation from the state to meet our low and very low income, it seems to me we would want to encourage more multifamily housing than single-family housing or commercial. Um, we don't need for us residents to have to cut back on our water use in order for um, other big houses and or commercial projects to come in when we don't have the in order for other big houses and/or commercial projects to come in when we don't have the water for it. And so it seems more that we should use the water for the current residents and for multifamily residents. Thank you.
Betty, any further public comment, Anthony, on consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment on the consent agenda, bring it back to council. I'll go ahead and pull item A three and ask Mr. Rybig in a moment to comment on that. Unless there are other items you'd like to pull, I'll entertain a motion for approval of A one, two, four, and five.
I'd like to move approval of items one, two, four, and five.
One second.
Motion by Councilmember Barton to approve A one, two, four, and five, seconded by Councilmember Addis. Any further discussion on those?
I have one thing, Mayor. I just want to thank Cal Myers. He applied for one board, and then he graciously applied for the half. And I am very excited to have a full half. I think it's going to be critically important, especially as we look towards the future of Morro Bay and the future of our harbor, to have a full commission there.
Great, thank you for that, indeed. Any other comments? If not, we're going to do a roll call vote, please.
Member Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote.
Thank you. I'll ask Mr. Rybig and/or Mr. Pollak to address item A three. And I know Betty Windholt sent in a number of questions, and I did see a response. At least to staff, Rob, can you give us an update and address the concerns about reducing the number of WEUs? And a concern about the lack of, or looking at the composition of the distribution system?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'd be happy to go over the distribution of WEUs and the amount of water that's available for the city. As we've outlined in the staff report and the supplemental document that was distributed to council this afternoon, we, in the supplemental document, we gave our, looked at our crystal ball and looked at what could possibly happen if we experience a longer-term drought. And we believe that there is sufficient water in storage in San Luis reservoir when combined with our local water supply and any state water that comes through the delta to the system. The water in storage in San Luis reservoir is the difference between what is contracted for and what is actually used. So the city contracts for 1,300 and 13 acre feet a year, and we use somewhere around 1,000. So every year, we save 300 acre feet, and that's kept in San Luis reservoir. The county contracted back when the state water project was first envisioned, 25,000 acre feet a year, and has contracts for 10,000 of that. So they keep in storage about 15,000 acre feet a year, which is unallocated reserves. County policy is, once the individual water agencies have used their water in storage, they make those agencies whole with that unallocated water that's in storage. County Water Resources staff estimates between four and five years of storage that are available in San Luis Obispo reservoir. That combined with our local water supply and IPR water anticipated coming on in 2024, I believe that we have sufficient water not to waste, but to provide the citizens with their current level of demand. Not saying that we couldn't do better in water conservation, we can always do better, but we are a very conserving city. As far as distribution of WEUs, this has been the distribution that has been in effect for quite some time. It ensures a mix of development types across the development spectrum, the single-family, multifamily, and commercial. All are needed for viability, and it's consistent with the city's general plan to provide those various types of development. And the WEUs that will be approved in the next year are approved through the planning process, and they likely will not come on board for between one and multiple years before we actually see that water demand. If we look at our one water report and our general plan, the estimates that we have with our existing water supplies, enough water to provide that water through the general plan build-out population of slightly under 12,200 people and the associated commercial that go along with that. Now, large commercial developments such as if a power plant were to redevelop as, you know, a large-scale commercial, they would likely need to bring some of their own water supply, which could be accomplished through reallocation of their wells on site, the Morro Bay Mutual Water Company wells, to provide additional water supply. I believe that answered the question when combined with the brief white paper that was distributed earlier. We haven't answered any further questions.
Thanks, Rob. I appreciate that. Thanks for sending the information. I'm giving feedback here, I'm not sure why, but that you sent previously today.
Yes, Mr. Pollak produced that in an easy digestible form rather than engineering ease as I might have produced it.
We appreciate that, Mr. Pollak. Thank you. Any questions of Rob? If not, thank you, Rob. I appreciate it very much. I'll go ahead and move approval of A three. Movement to approve by Mayor Heading, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion? Not, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Member Addis?
Yeah.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote.
Thanks again, Rob, for that. And Greg, thanks for transferring the engineering jargon into human language. We appreciate that very much. With that, that completes item A. That moves us to item B, our public hearings. Our first public hearing, public hearing item is item B one. This is a resolution declaring the results of majority protest proceedings and reestablishing, if there's no majority protest, the Morro Bay Tourism Business Improvement District to help fund the sales, marketing, and communication programs for Morro Bay lodging businesses and vacation rental businesses pursuant to the Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994. I want to thank Mr. Collins and the T-Bid for their extensive work on this. I really appreciate the comprehensive nature of the review that we have seen previously, and then also the staff report tonight where we will evaluate if indeed there are protest votes that have been lodged. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins. Scott, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And also I have Michael Womboldt, who's our contract leader of the city tourism team at this point. And city councils proceed several updates on this. And this concludes the formal process of creating a new Tourism Business Improvement District and transferring ownership from the city to a new nonprofit board. This all started this time last year when we had to take a pause from marketing because of COVID-19 and provided an opportunity to really assess how we were doing, look at where our gaps were, and where ultimately we wanted to go as a tourism organization. And through that process of doing outreach to stakeholders and working with the current T-Bid board, it became clear that there was probably a better way of doing this. Instead of going through the annual renewal process, which is very time-consuming and inefficient, then we moved to a five-year approval process, which we're concluding tonight. But also moving it out of the city into the hands of the tourism industry itself with city representation on the board. So ultimately, what we're recommending is that the public hearing be held and testimony be received and see if there's any new protest bids that are collected tonight. As of this meeting, I think Dana, we received maybe four, three or four total protests that equated to less than 1% of the total T-Bid assessment revenues generated. So fail the, to hit that 50% mark. So council has the authority to move forward. As I've mentioned, we've discussed this numerous times with council, so don't really need to go into too much of the detail. They're going to say that you'll see a lot of the same function will be carried on under this new board. The main focus will be promotions for tourism for Morro Bay as a destination. You know, funds will be spent primarily in that regard with staff to oversee administration and oversee contractors who provide and do that work for us. And the representation that is being considered on the board of a seven-member board is to have four members of the hotel industry, one member of the vacation rental industry, an at-large member from the community, and a city representative on that seven-person board. They will begin their work beginning on July 8th. So the city is working with the current T-Bid to figure out how funds can be transferred out of the city into this new fund and things like that. So there's some logistical issues to sort out, but we've been really well-served by Michael, being in that interim role, and his expertise and work that he did helping start Visit SlowCal. So he's been significant help to us in this transition period. So again, I'll be happy to answer any questions that council may have, but we're seeking that Council adopt Resolution Number 2821, which reforms the T-Bid Assessment District and does the other things that are necessary to complete this transition. So happy to answer any questions. And Michael is here to talk about any transition questions you may have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, and welcome, Michael. Appreciate you being here tonight. Council, this is the staff report. We'll go to any council questions and answers, questions you may have of either Michael or Scott. I'll then open up the public hearing, ask the clerk to read any protest votes received. I'll open up public comment for any further protest votes or general comment. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion, and then entertain a motion. And so with that, are there any council questions for either Michael or for Scott at this time? Looking for hands, seeing no hands, and looks like we have no questions. And I have no questions, thank you. We've seen this a number of times. And again, Michael, appreciate the work that you're doing as well to make this transition occur. Also like to recognize SlowCal, Chuck Davison for his assistance in always guiding what we do as a county and as a city, and for weighing in previously in comments regarding this change. So with that, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment and ask the clerk specifically what protest votes we have received to date.
Mr. Mayor, the city received four protest votes from vacation rental owners. It constituted less than 1% of the funds raised by the bid. Does not constitute a majority protest.
And that was as of 5:30 this evening, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment. Any members of the public wishing to either protest or support should speak now. Public comment is open. If any members of the public would like to make general comments regarding this, now would be the time to do that. So with that, I'll go ahead and open up public comment and ask, Anthony, do we have any public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do see a hand raised, Chuck Davison.
Speaking of, I won't say the devil, but welcome, Chuck.
Mayor Heading, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, welcome.
Great. Mayor Heading, thank you. Council members, city manager Collins, city staff, appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. I'm Chuck Davison, president and CEO of Visit SlowCal, Countywide Tourism Marketing District. And I'm excited to be in front of you tonight to lend my support in the establishment of the new Morro Bay Tourism Business Improvement District. The establishment of this district under the 94 Act is similar to the structure to what you have allowed to occur and continue to support for Visit SlowCal. The importance of this structure really lies in its public-private partnership, allowing the lodging community to oversee the implementation and the work of the T-Bid in concert with the local government. At Visit SlowCal, we really believe this model has been extremely effective in advancing the interests of both the tourism community and our greater community as well. And as I've stated to you before in other meetings, I believe Morro Bay has one of the greatest opportunities for advancement of any community in our entire county. At Visit SlowCal, we can't be successful without Morro Bay being successful. You have currently overseen the district someone in Michael Womboldt, who's intimately familiar with Visit SlowCal and our work, having served as our Director of Travel Trade for almost five years prior to our required staff reductions due to COVID-19. Michael has great wisdom in how to leverage the Visit SlowCal funnel, which all of you are familiar with, and that work that we do to help Morro Bay advance its tourism and community cause. And we at Visit SlowCal, as always, stand ready in our continued support of your community and this broader tourism effort. So I encourage you to move this item forward, and I thank you again for the opportunity to partner with you and the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Chuck. Appreciate that. Anthony, do we have further public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment and close the public hearing. Having received no further protest votes, it appears, it's obvious that the required number of protests is less than the requirement that would be needed to not move forward with this initiative. And so with that, I'll go ahead and either entertain a motion or any further discussion on the item.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that council adopt Resolution 28-21, declaring results of the majority protest proceedings and reestablishing the Morro Bay Tourism Business Improvement District to help fund sales, marketing, and communication programs for Morro Bay lodging businesses and vacation rental businesses pursuant to the Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994.
One second.
Motion by Councilmember Davis for the staff recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Heller, was that a second or did you have a question?
That was a second.
Okay. You got beat. So we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Member Addis?
Yeah.
Councilmember Barton? Councilmember Barton? I'll come back to her. Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Councilmember Barton, are you available to cast your vote?
Is she muted? Can you tell?
Yes, she is muted.
Laurel, you're muted. You have to unmute yourself.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Without her vote, we'll list her as having abstained from the vote.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion carries for 01.
Great, thank you. That finishes item B dash one. Thank you for that. Again, thank you, Scott and Michael. Appreciate all the work that you've done in the background. And our thanks as a council to T-Bid. And our thanks as a council to T-Bid for all of the work that they've done in making this happen as well. We're looking forward to a great positive transition. That brings us to item B2. This is an appeal filed on April 28th of 2021 of the Planning Commission's denial of an appeal of the administratively issued minor use permit, MUP 20-02, approving a change in use from a motel formerly the Twin Bay Inn and Best Western to supportive housing. The zoning of the site is MCR/R4/SP and is not located in the coastal appeals jurisdiction. As required by state law, supportive housing is a use allowed by right in both the MCR and the R4 zones. This is also a public hearing. The process will be to have the staff go ahead and make the presentation. We will allow any council questions for staff specifically. I will then open up the public hearing and ask the appellant to come forward. The appellant will have 10 minutes to present her case, and then ask the applicant to come forward if they so wish, and the applicant will also have 10 minutes to present their case. I then will open general public comment, and any members of the public wishing to weigh in may do so at that time. At that point, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council, and if you do have specific questions for the applicant or the appellant, we'll allow that as well, and then move to council deliberation and entertain a motion. And so with that, Nancy Hubbard, welcome. Good to have you here this evening. Appreciate you and look forward to your presentation.
Thank you very much. Here we go. I'm going to share my screen. Okay, can you see the presentation?
We can see it, Nancy.
Okay. This is the appeal of a minor modification for a change in use at 2460 Main Street. The project is currently operating as a 27-room motel. The current owner applied for a minor use permit December 15th, 2020, to change the use to supportive housing. The application was reviewed and deemed complete on February 2nd, 2021, and following a public notice period, an administrative decision for approval was made and a permit issued on February 24th, 2021. And I also am going to read the description of supportive housing because there seems like there's a lot of people that aren't sure what that is. It is defined as housing with no limit on length of stay that is occupied by a target population, and that is linked to onsite or offsite services that assist the supportive housing resident in retaining the housing, improving their health status, and maximizing their ability to live and win possible work in the community. State and federal laws related to the approval of this project. People in alcohol and substance abuse recovery are considered disabled under both state and federal law. It is unlawful to discriminate in land use practices, including decisions that prohibit housing on the basis of a population with a disability. Supportive housing shall be a use by right approved administratively in all zones where multifamily and mixed uses are permitted. And the city's recently adopted housing element includes a goal to remove constraints to the creation of housing for all income levels and for people with disabilities. Further, the city shall remove constraints and provide reasonable accommodations to support housing intended for occupancy by persons with physical, developmental, or mental disabilities, which specifically includes transitional and supportive housing. Appeal to Planning Commission. March 1, 2021, Ashley Smith filed an appeal to Planning Commission. Planning Commission held the public hearing on April 20th, 2021, to consider the appeal. The Planning Commission denied the appeal and upheld the director's approval of the MUP 20-02. The current appeal was filed on April 28th by Ashley Smith. No other appeals were filed. Grounds for appeal and staff response. Number one, city admin and city commission did not research or provide evidence or documentation that an analysis was completed on all circumstances in which a city can deny this permit as outlined in the Housing Accountability Act. Staff response, the city permit review process involves a review by each department to ensure that the proposed project or change in use meets the criteria in the general plan, coastal land use plan, and requirements stated in the zoning code. This is the same process used for any planning application for any type of project in any zone, including other residential uses in the same zone as the subject property. The city does not search for ways in which a project can be denied if the project meets the standards of the zoning code. Number two, grounds for appeal. The appellant provided a list of facilities that they believe are affiliated with the applicant and/or operator, and demanded that the city investigate these facilities to provide evidence that these facilities did not have specific adverse impact on public health and safety, as stated as one of the Housing Accountability Act grounds in which a project can be denied. Staff response, this is not grounds for an appeal. The experiences of other facilities in other communities does not provide relevant information for the review and approval of this subject project. Additionally, state requirements in AB 2162 and in the Housing Accountability Act and the zoning code state that review of a housing application for supportive housing should not be subject to requirements or conditions that are not also imposed on other residential projects. The city does not review the background of other applicants applying for residential projects. The background and related experiences of the applicant, operator, and employees are all part of the state licensing review process. The state license cannot be applied for until the project has final approval from the jurisdiction in which it's located. Number three, grounds for appeal. The appellant provided a list of documents related to the State Department of Healthcare Services licensing process and requested that the city obtain these documents and provide them to the Planning Commission, and I believe she meant city council, and the appellant prior to the appeal hearing. This is also not grounds for an appeal. Not only is licensing not relevant to the city decision on the change in use, but the applicant can't apply for state license until the project has a valid permit approving the change in use. The permit was issued but is not effective while the appeal decisions are pending. Number four, grounds for appeal. The appellant provided a list of detailed operational questions for the applicant. Again, this list of questions does not constitute grounds for the appeal. The responses to these questions would not result in necessary information needed by the city to issue a minor use permit. The city does not require this type of background or operational information from any other applicant applying for a permit for residential use or a business. The licensing of the facility, the operations, staffing, and services provided are all under the purview of the state of California. Requesting answers to this type of detailed question could be construed as harassment and/or bias against housing for the disabled. The applicant was provided the list of facilities in grounds for appeal two and the questions in this grounds for appeal four, and did respond, and those responses were attached to the staff report as the exhibit F. I do want to clarify that one of the comments from the public on affiliation with absolute control facility, the owner, who is the applicant, answered that there was no affiliation. The consultant who is helping the applicant with the licensing is a volunteer on the board for that facility, and he made that clarification later, earlier today. Grounds for appeal number five. The appellant requested that the city council hearing take place on a Thursday and be in person, so the appellant and the city council could have ample time to review the staff report and other information regarding this appeal. Again, this is not grounds for an appeal. City council holds hearings every second and fourth Tuesday of each month and has not lifted the COVID-19 procedures that would allow an in-person hearing. Additionally, the staff report is available three days prior to the hearing, whether it's on a Tuesday or a Thursday. The appellant agreed to the hearing date for today. Review of requested relief or action in the appellant's appeal. Number one, she requested that we delay the permit to have a public hearing with city council decision. The permit has been delayed approximately three and a half months in total due to the back-to-back appeals filed by Ashley Smith. The Planning Commission appeal also included a request for a delay in the permit to get a Planning Commission decision. Number two, in-person hearing, and again, the city is following COVID-19 guidelines and is not holding in-person hearings. Here's some criteria related to project conditions of approval. State law provides that supportive housing shall be considered a residential use of property and shall be subject only to those restrictions that apply to other residential dwellings of the same type in the same zone, and that means other multifamily projects. The existing MUP 20-02 permit includes a condition that the facility provide the city with a copy of the final state license and notify the city of any changes in that license status. The city council can add project-specific conditions as long as they are not restrictive in a way that a multifamily project would not be conditioned. For example, conditions such as asking for state licensing reports may be acceptable as long as they don't violate the resident privacy laws, and restrictions such as parking density, restrictions on the client's activities would not be allowed. Staff recommends that city council deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission decision and director's approval of MUP 20-02, allowing the change in use to supportive housing in compliance with the requirements of the Morro Bay Municipal Code by adopting City Council Resolution 29-21.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate your comprehensive report. Thanks for the overview of the issues, and thank you for the detailed responses to the appellant reviewing in detail everything that was raised. I appreciate all the time that you spent. Also wanted to thank our Planning Commission for the extensive review that they did, and thank you staff also for your work with the Planning Commission in bringing their recommendation forward. We'll start with general questions from council. I'll go ahead and lead off. Council, I want you to know also that our city attorney, Chris Niermeyer, is here as well, but also our assistant city attorney, Ellen Jurley, is with us this evening, and she's available to answer any questions as well as part of our staff regarding this issue if there's clarification needed regarding the city's authority, any law that's been cited, et cetera. So to begin with, I just want to kind of address the issues that I received, not only during public comment this evening, but from numerous emails. Thank you to our public members that wrote to council. I've read all of the detailed documentation. My responses to all of you were obviously generic in the fact that I'd received them, reviewed them, but could not comment on them until this evening because it was a public hearing. So again, just wanted to note that I did do a comprehensive review of all the information provided and thank the public for weighing in both on a positive, supportive standpoint and also those that are opposing the project. Perhaps I could start with either Ellen or Chris, our city attorneys, and just if you could give myself or council an overview of the authority that we have with regard to this kind of project application, just a general overview. And I know Nancy did an excellent job, but I'd appreciate the legal interpretation of that. And welcome, Ellen, by the way.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Chris, do you want to start off, or do you want me to launch into? I know Chris is on.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I will defer to Ellen Jurley to provide some legal background here, and I will be focusing on procedural issues for the council if there are any questions in that respect. So I will pass it on to Ms. Jurley, and thank you for being here tonight, Ellen.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, well, the, I'll keep it relatively short. I think the main provision that the council needs to be concerned about, well, there's several, but the main one that really preempts a lot of actions by the city is in the government code. It's called the Housing Accountability Act, and there's a section, it is, and I'll tell you, it's Government Code 65589.5, and it's subdivision D specifically, that relates to housing developments that are low and moderate, that for very low or moderate-income households, and the HCD has clarified that these do include supportive housing. And what the law says is that a local agency may not deny such a project unless it makes specific written findings based upon a preponderance of the evidence in the record as to one of the following, and I'll go back to preponderance of the evidence in the record in a minute because that's important. So really, the only thing that is before you today is whether or not this development would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety, and there is no feasible method to satisfactorily, satisfactorily, I cannot say that word, mitigate or avoid the specific adverse impact without rendering the development unaffordable to low and moderate-income households or rendering the development of the emergency shelter financially infeasible. So and as used in this state law, a specific adverse impact means a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified, written, public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete. So a couple of things. Comments that this will have an adverse impact do not constitute evidence in this particular case, and I'll talk a little bit about, you know, what kinds of adverse impacts we might anticipate from a project that would get denied, sort of hypothetically. But I do want to go back to what we mean by a preponderance of the evidence in the record. Normally, when we are looking at entitlements, the standard of review by a court is if there is significant evidence to support a decision. So what that means is that as long as there's significant evidence to support your decision, even if there's even more evidence on the other side, your decision will be upheld by a court, and the court will defer to your decision. Preponderance of the evidence is not like that. It's something that you see in litigation rather than public hearings. What that actually means is that based on the weight of the evidence, your decision is more likely than not. So you have to go on the side of where there is more evidence. So remember that the standard here is not that you have to show that there is not an adverse impact before you can approve this, but rather that you have to approve it unless you can show that there's going to be a specific and quantifiable adverse impact. So So that's, that's one aspect of it. And you know, as you know, housing is a really big issue in California and the legislature has been enacting laws that are increasingly controlling of localities and this is, this is one of them. So the other thing that you wanna keep in mind is that the, both state and federal housing laws protect housing for the disabled and individuals who are in recovery from alcohol and drug abuse are considered disabled individuals and there are a lot of laws that protect them because there is a lot of prejudice against them. And so you wanna be mindful that simply denying a project based on the character of the residents who are, who live in this project, not rather the character, but based on the fact that it is housing for individuals in recovery could have you run afoul of state and federal law. And you know, in the federal context, and you know, it could sort of give you a worst-case scenario, but the federal context, that can run you attorney fees as well as damages and punitive damages. So that, that can be quite expensive. So what does this mean? What this means for you is that the decision that you make has to be made based on actual evidence and that the actions you take should not be actions taken in response to comments that disapprove of this kind of facility without actually providing you with concrete evidence that there would be an adverse impact. You know, you, you don't want to assume that this kind of facility starts out by being a problem. You know, my colleague asked me earlier, what are the kinds of things that, you know, what are the kinds of adverse impacts that would support denial of a facility? And you know, to be perfectly honest, there's not a lot. There's not many examples and this law is relatively new, but the types of adverse impacts that we envision typically are, for example, if you have a community of single-family homes with narrow windy streets and somebody wants to build a 10-story housing project, the adverse impacts could be a view, could be effect on the sewers, effect on the roads, effect on emergency services, effect on water and electricity and since something like that would be like, could be found to have the kind of adverse impacts that you could deny the project on. But then of course you have to think about mitigation as well. So you have to look at first, is there no way to mitigate? Can we make this project smaller? Is there a way to, to make this work? So it's not an all or nothing situation. You know, another possible example is if you have a hillside that is prone to landslides and somebody wants to build something very large and imposing, that might cause soil subsidence. So that, did I say that word right? So that's another example. So that's, that's just to give you a, a big picture view of the legal landscape and then, you know, I'd be happy to answer more specific questions, but I just wanna give you a sense of where you are is that, you know, you really, you have state and federal laws that really support this kind of housing and state law in particular is, is telling you that unless you can really show evidence that you're gonna have an adverse impact, this kind of project must be approved.
Thanks. And a follow-up question, what I heard you say is that quote-unquote comments don't necessarily equal evidence and I guess my, my question is, it appears like we have a, a preponderance of anecdotal evidence or comments that we've received from the public that raise concerns that this is true evidence of a negative public health impact and, and I don't wanna belabor the issue, but how would one substantiate that and is that substantiated or even a consideration?
Right. Well, I mean, one would substantiate it with, for example, this, this exact group of people have a facility two miles down the street and here is a list of how many medical responses there are, police responses, et cetera, et cetera. To simply say, this is going to strain our emergency services is not evidence. You know, I, I can say that I'm six foot two. Is that evidence that I'm six foot two? No. It's just something that I'm saying. So the, the difficulty is that we are, we typically think of testimony from the public and comments from the public as testimony in these hearings. In this field of law, you have to be very mindful that you actually need concrete evidence and people's opinion about whether this should or shouldn't be in this neighborhood simply does not constitute evidence, it's simply their opinion.
To follow up on that, having been a healthcare professional all of my life and having been a hospital administrator, I know that the Department of Healthcare Services licenses these kinds of entities, if you will, or provider services and that Medicare evaluates them to determine if they're on an exclusion list and if they're available for actually receiving payment from the federal government, which are very important to entities like this. My question is, does the city have any role whatsoever in the facility licensure or overseeing any of the components of that?
Well, not in the case of state licensed facilities, but I do wanna remind the mayor and the council that the city is not completely powerless. In the event that any business or entity causes problems and becomes a public nuisance, the city does have enforcement tools within its municipal code, but they simply, you know, the licensing is, is just not something that we get involved in. This is something that is purely managed by the state.
So to, to go further down the lines of trying to, again, vet out the concerns of the community, if, if, if the city, or let me just, let me back up one step, if, if the licensed facility, this facility which becomes licensed, if they do, by the Department of Healthcare Services, has numerous violations, could the city potentially impose a condition where it would be notified or could be notified of this if the applicant agreed and therefore maybe perhaps allow us to have an understanding if there are operational issues that might impact the community? Is that something that the council could condition with regard to this?
Yeah. I mean, I think if the applicant agrees, that should not be an issue. What I would caution the council on is, of course, is to request only notification for violations that the department has determined have occurred or disciplinary proceedings. I would stay away from things like complaints or investigations because anyone can make a complaint and, you know, the last thing you need is to have 50 complaints that are unfounded and then have that be, oh, look, this is evidence, there's something wrong. No, complaint is just a complaint. So I think you could add that as a condition and provided the applicant agrees, like you would not be able to deny the project if they didn't, but if they did, yes, I think that would be fine.
And then we heard from a number of public testimony individuals this evening, but also written communication that an entity like this may draw disproportionate use of city services like police, fire and emergency services. Now that's anecdotal information as far as I'm concerned because this has not been an operating facility and, and we just don't know what those impacts might be. But could the city also potentially ask for a routine report as part of the conditions from emergency services, police, fire, et cetera, to determine if there are adverse impacts that might be affecting the community? Or would that be, not be appropriate?
I mean, sure, you could ask for it. It's, it's information that is readily available about this and any other, other facility. You know, the, the thing that I, again, there's always a note of caution, right? I think that the assumption that a facility is going to provide, is, is going to cause problems is, could get you into trouble because if all you're doing is you're asking for reports of this facility, you're not necessarily comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. So you know, the fact that, like for example, as a, I've, I've run across jurisdictions where there were motels that were poorly run and rented out by the hour or by the day and where the calls for police and, and fire service were through the roof, completely insane, whereas licensed facilities had very few calls. You know, senior housing could have a lot of ambulance calls because of the nature of the housing. So the fact that there are a number of calls doesn't necessarily indicate that something is a public nuisance and it, and getting only the information for that facility could give you not necessarily the, the right idea of what's really going on, but yes, that is information that you can freely get from your fire department and from your police department.
My last question, and I appreciate your, your detailed information, Ellen. My last question for you is, you mentioned that this, this group of individuals that will be serviced through this facility are in a protected class. And if the city council unjustifiably denies the applicant the permit to actually move forward with the project, that that could lead to potential increased litigation liability to the city. Could you just expand a little bit on that?
Certainly. So housing for protected individuals is protected. So that's kind of redundant. So if the, if, the idea is that protected individuals should not be treated differently from others. So in, in this field of law, it's, it's kind of a big field of law, so I'm, I'm gonna try to boil it down to the essence. In this field of law, discrimination doesn't necessarily mean invidious discrimination, like we don't like these people, it just means treating differently. So the next level then is, are they being treated differently, better or worse? If they're treated, treated differently and they're, they're having, they have something provided that is not provided to non-disabled people, that's fine, but if something is taken away or denied that is available to non-disabled people, that's a real problem. And so what we have is, we have several statutory schemes that come into play. The main ones are state and federal housing laws, but there's also, by the way, a section in the government code that provides that if housing is denied, any decision made by a city that is based on an unpermitted category, so if, if it's based on discrimination against a protected category can be invalidated. So that's sort of your basic level is that this decision can be invalidated, it can be invalidated under the, the Housing Accountability Act, it can be invalidated under an already existing government code that pre-existed the Housing Accountability Act. And if the, the court comes back and says you have to grant this permit and the city refuses, then the fines can start and the fines are $10,000, $10,000 a day for, for the violations and they can be, if the, and if the violation is a knowing violation, if it's on purpose basically, the, the fines can be quintable, so it could be $50,000 a day and this is just under the Housing Accountability Act. It doesn't even include any possible liability that the city could be exposed under the federal and state housing, housing laws. And you know, under those laws, it's not just the applicant who can challenge the city, but it's also any of the potential residents that are not able to and also to some limited extent, housing, housing entities, like groups that provide housing. And under the federal law, you know, I, I look at mostly the federal law because that's where the big penalties are. Under the federal law, if you go to court and you lose, you are subject to not only your attorney's fees, but also the prevailing party's attorney's fees and believe me, attorneys who argue these things in court charge upwards of $750 an hour. And you're also subject to damages as well as punitive damages. So you know, this is a very delicate area of law and it's, and it's the, the area of law where it's a little bit flipped upside down. And I know I'm being very, so very wonky here and kinda nerdy and
That's helpful.
But I, I think it helps to kind of understand, right? So in this area of law, in most areas of law, cities are permitted to legislate to prevent a problem from happening, right? That's what zoning codes are for. They say, well, we don't want these types of uses next to these types of uses, we want this density here, this density here. And we try to map out how we are going to plan the city and avoid problems. In most areas of law, you can rely on the findings of other cities. So for example, when you adopt a sign code, you can rely on findings from all the other cities, right? And you can put those in your ordinance and that is perfectly acceptable. When you adopt an ordinance that is, that is facially neutral, if you have discriminatory intent, it doesn't really matter as long as the ordinance is neutral. In this area of law, it's not quite like that. If you have discriminatory intent, that could invalidate an ordinance or a decision that is supported under neutral grounds. In this area of law, you cannot preemptively assume that there's going to be a problem and enact laws and make decisions to prevent problems that don't necessarily exist. And you know, I, I happen to know this because I worked with the city of Costa Mesa on their ordinance for sober living homes and you know, we had a, there was a long court battle that we ultimately won, but the reason for that was that we actually had evidence that was specific to that city and we could support this, the provisions that we adopted in that city. We could not rely on evidence from even the city next door and you know, we could not rely on generic findings made by other cities. So it has to be a specific impact that's happening in your city and unfortunately, what's difficult about this is that, the question is, well, how much impact do we have to put up with until, before we can actually legislate? And it's not clear where the line is, right? But there has to be some impact, there has to be some evidence that there is an issue within the particular locality. And otherwise, your decision will be struck down, your law will be struck down. So you know, a perfect example of this, and I know I'm going, going a little bit far afield, but just to give you sort of a big picture of how this works. So one of the typical things that, that we've, that I've seen in case law is cities that adopt ordinances that have separation requirements between certain types of homes, right? Supportive housing, group homes, sober living homes, what have you. And then it gets in front of the court and the court says, well, why did you put a thousand foot distance between them? And the city says, well, because we didn't want too many of them. And then the court says, well, how many did you have that applied? Oh, two. Okay, well, that's right, your law has been struck down because there is no evidence of over-concentration, right? So that's how it's a little bit backwards than the rest of the law. So you know, it's, it's, and, and there's a reason for it. These are individuals and you know, handicapped individuals, disabled individuals, you know, the federal laws call them handicapped, the state laws call them disabled, are very often discriminated against and individuals in recovery in particular. And so these laws are quite strongly protected of them.
Ellen, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thanks for the extensive responses to what I think are important questions for the community to understand that we need to understand as a council in making the decision. That, that's all the questions I have. I'm gonna move to council numbers. Chris, yes, go ahead.
A couple of the questions. If, if I could just underscore briefly
Um, if, if I could just underscore briefly, um, I, I wanted to make sure that the community and the council knows that, um, you know, Attorney Eleanor Gerley has been working with this area of the law for many, many years, and, um, you know, I asked her to be here tonight, and I asked her to work with staff prior to tonight because this is, uh, as was just, I think, clear, one of her legal specialties. And, um, you know, she regularly advises cities when they have issues like this. And, uh, you know, it's not always that the city is powerless, as Eleanor referenced. Um, she spent many years working with a city in Orange County where, uh, they regulated unlicensed sober homes, and it went all the way up to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And the ordinance that Eleanor helped them craft, uh, the court said was okay. She made brief reference to that. Um, but, um, you know, I, I want to be clear to the community and the council that, uh, you know, as legal counsel, um, you know, at the end of the day, uh, we, we just need to let folks know what the law says or doesn't say, and then, you know, if there's discretion or not. And for better or for worse, without offering my opinion on the state law, um, the council is very, very limited in what it can and can't do tonight and stay within the bounds of the law. As Eleanor talked about, the presumption is, is that this permit, uh, should be issued unless the city meets an incredibly high burden for showing, among other things, and the one that's on appeal, that there is an adverse, um, public impact, uh, health and safety impact. And the law goes on even further procedurally, just to note, as Eleanor mentioned, that not only do you need to show that there's a specific adverse impact on public health and safety, but it has to be significant, quantifiable, direct, unavoidable, it can't be mitigated, and furthermore, it must be based upon written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions. Translation, it's a very, very high burden to stay within the parameters of state law. And so, um, again, without offering, you know, personal opinion on whether state law is right or wrong, um, you know, the council and the community should know that this is largely a state law preemption issue. And, uh, the fact that this permit under state law was administratively issued in the first place, and doesn't even require a public hearing unless there's an appeal, uh, I think speaks volumes about what state law allows and doesn't allow local communities to do, um, in, in, in situations like this. So, um, I just wanted to underscore that, and, uh, again, I'm, uh, glad that Eleanor was able to be here tonight and to work with staff. And like I said, she's worked in this area of the law for many, many years, and there's a lot of detailed statutes, both state and federal, that apply. And so, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, but I just wanted to, uh, make those few comments.
Thank, thanks, Chris, I appreciate that. Um, gonna go ahead, um, this, these are questions for, um, either of our city attorneys or Nancy, our planner. Start with Councilmember Heller, is there questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You asked a lot of the questions I wanted to ask, but that's okay. They're, they're questions, and they, and they need to be answered for sure. Uh, I, I think probably to everyone who lives in Morro Bay and who's most places, there's nothing more important than our neighborhoods and all of our neighborhoods, and I think all concerns that are expressed in this regard are legitimate and need to be listened to, and, uh, I read the binder, I've looked at all the materials, and, uh, I, I share, I share everyone's concern about potential impacts of this facility. I guess the question I want to ask our attorney is, I'm assuming that our municipal codes relative to noise, traffic, and other kinds of things that, that degrade, uh, quality are still in effect, uh, for this facility?
Absolutely.
And i, i, if going forward, we find that there are, uh, there is a significant amount of evidence, um, uh, that this does in fact, uh, provide some kind of an adverse impact on health and safety, but what position does the city have, uh, if, if that should, should occur, and this would just become a nightmare city, for example?
Chris, do you want me to address that?
Uh, sure, that would be great.
Sure. Well, you know, besides, uh, being able to cite for violations of the code, you also have the ability to, um, seek injunct, injunctive relief and shut down any business or, um, or property where a public nuisance is occurring. So, if, in the event that the facility starts having, uh, I mean, a, a, a high number of problems, then that is something that you can do as a city.
And so, and when you say public nuisance, could you give me an example of what that might look like?
Well, I mean, it, it really would depend, it could be, you know, public nuisances, I, I assume, I haven't looked at it, but I assume that in your code, you have a code that provides, that has a list of things that are public nuisance per se. But usually in, in codes, there are provisions to say any violation of this code is a public nuisance. So, if there are a lot of police calls, if there's a lot of noise, if there are, you know, code violations that are health and safety related, building codes, um, uh, even , uh, dying vegetation, if there are, and, and any kind of behaviors that provide a, that are, cause a problem, can all be swept in under, uh, public nuisance abatement.
Okay, and if that were to take place, what would be our recourse? Would we have to go to the state licensing agency with, with our concerns, or, or let it?
So, no, public nuisance abatement is purely a municipal remedy. The, the state licensing would go on its own track. Uh, presumably, there's a complaint, um, there's a way to file complaints with the, with the state licensing board, people wherever they are, um, the, um, Department of Healthcare Services. And, uh, but the, the public nuisance abatement is a, a purely municipal, um, remedy. And you would, you can, you can go a couple of different ways, that you can do it administratively, you can go directly to court and obtain an injunction. Um, we've had facilities before, and not necessarily of this type, but, you know, I, I worked in enforcement, uh, for my first, the first few years that I worked as, as a city attorney, and, um, you know, we shut down bars, we shut down restaurants, uh, we've shut down, um, uh, gambling, we've, all kinds of things, you know? If, uh, if somebody operates outside the law, we can shut them down, we can get an injunction in court.
Okay, so that option is there, although obviously it sounds difficult, uh, because this is a disabled population, we respect the federal state laws, are correct?
Well, yes, but I mean, disability doesn't excuse public nuisance conduct, right? Those two things are completely separate. The, the point of the, uh, the laws that protect the disabled is that we don't come out of the gate assuming that there's going to be a problem. Like, we don't start out thinking, oh, this is obviously gonna be a nuisance. We just, we have to assume that the housing is going to be provided, it's gonna be taken care of, in this case, it's gonna be licensed by the state, so presumably, there, there are going to be policies and, uh, and regulations that they have to follow. Um, and, you know, there are a lot of benefits, uh, for, uh, that, that come from these types of facilities. So, you know, if it's poorly run, it's gonna be a problem, but that's true of everything. You know, if your school is poorly run, it's gonna be a problem.
Right. Okay.
You know, a restaurant is poorly run, it's gonna be a problem. Uh, you know, we've, we've shut down all kinds of places because they were poorly run, and, and honestly, it can be the most innocent uses that can end up being public nuisances. And, you know, in most of these facilities, honestly, you don't even know they're there.
Okay, those are my
Yeah, if I could just, uh, add on to that, um, the basic idea here is that, uh, you know, supportive housing, uh, the law is very strict and jealous, if you will, about it being treated equally. Now, that, of course, cuts both ways, where, uh, if, you know, it becomes a public nuisance, and, uh, Morro Bay's code, it's in, um, chapter eight point one four, public nuisances. For example, as Eleanor mentioned, um, you know, per se violations, ones that are by code, you know, it, it says in there that an example is, um, overgrown vegetation, accumulation of boxes, boards, or other material that is likely to harbor rats, rodents, vermin, or other similar nuisances. Um, it says broken windows constituting hazardous conditions and/or inviting trespassers and malicious mischief. Um, you know, there's examples there, and the basic idea is that state law has all these requirements and federal law that you treat these facilities equally. Now, that means that the law applies to them equally, too. So, if there's a public nuisance, just like, you know, if a restaurant in town needed to be shut down because of health and safety violations, um, it would be the same thing. Or if the existing motel there that is being proposed to have a conversion to this use, you know, if that hotel had become a problem, you know, it'd be the same thing. Um, and, you know, the public nuisance action can be taken by the city's attorney's office at the direction of, uh, you know, uh, the city. Um, but right now, we don't have, uh, we have speculation that there could be a problem. Um, but the facility hasn't opened, and it hasn't even received a state permit yet. They can't get a state permit until it goes through the city process.
Okay. Thank you very much, both of you, for answering my questions, that's all. Yeah, Mayor?
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember, uh, Davis, please, questions?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember, um, Addis, please, questions?
Hi, my, thank you for all the information, and thank you to Planning Commission as well for all of the work that, um, that all of you did. I, my, I guess my biggest question is what the city can do to help ensure the safety of residents. Um, we've had a lot of different comments, uh, about, you know, concern about the neighborhood, but we also received some comments around the safety and wellbeing of the residents, and where, um, just what we could do about that overall.
Well, um, there's really not a lot. I mean, the, the state is licensing, licenses facilities and ensures that residents are, um, treated the, the way they're supposed to be treated. Um, I'm sure the applicant will be able to tell you more about the types of policies that they are required to have, and, um, and protocols that they have to put into place. Um, you know, in, in any situation where there are people that are being mistreated, or if there's a problem, there are possible solutions, you know, the DA's office, it could be investigations. So, you know, we would have the same remedies that we would have for anything else. So, you know, you can have a restaurant, or you could have people that are being trafficked, for example, and they're working there, um, against the law. So, what are the remedies? Well, there are laws that protect people, and, you know, you have to investigate and, and, uh, and, uh, and bring law enforcement into it. So, it would really sort of, you know, it would really depend on the nature of, of the issue.
And is there anything, um, is there anything we can do as a city so that if people do have concerns about treatment of residents, they can bring those forward more easily, or are we kind of bound by what already exists?
I think in that case, it would be, uh, a referral to, uh, the Department of Health Services. I mean, it would be a, it's because the state regulates the facility, the state provides the permit, um, and so, first and foremost, uh, you know, the state is the one that, um, you know, confirms or, or, or says that there's a problem with following the state regulations. A, and again, y, you know, the, the question that you're asking underscores the fact that, you know, again, for better or for worse, this is one of those issues. Notwithstanding, cities in California have perhaps some of the, uh, the greatest liberties for local government throughout the entire country. You know, in other states, cities don't have as much authority constitutionally as California cities do. But there are a few areas of the law where cities just don't have much discretion, the state has preempted, um, you know, much authority at all, and, and this is one of those areas. Um, you know, there's some other areas in the law like this where Morro Bay hasn't really experienced them, but, you know, another common area is, um, is wireless facilities, um, and, you know, location of wireless towers, you know, again, that's been preempted largely by state and federal law. And, uh, it's more a function of the law that, that this discussion is predicated on than, uh, exercising discretion.
Is there anything we can do to make the process of reporting to the state easier, like any assistance the city can be? I know that, um, one of the callers talked about how much work had gone into the appeal, and I know, um, many of the folks that wrote to us, wrote to us about how frustrated they were with the process, and how they felt that it was hard to get information. Is there anything we can do to ease the process, or is that really in the hands of the state when it comes to making any of these complaints?
I'm not sure, I'd need to have more specifics about, uh, what the, uh, appellate's, um, specific frustrations were in securing information. Um, you know, any record that is deemed a public record, the state needs to turn it over, and, uh, I, I'm just not sure how to answer that in terms of getting information from the state. Uh, certainly, I could follow up on that if, if there's more specifics.
Just, just maybe a comment, Councilmember Addis, from a former hospital administrator that operated, uh, within the integrated network that I oversaw, um, two of these facilities. The Department of Healthcare Services is a licensing agency. Um, it's very easy, um, um, through, uh, to report a potential violation. It's a simple eight hundred number call. In my experience, um, the, there's a mandate to answer and respond within a certain amount of time with regard to an investigation and follow-up and determination for action. And so, um, just, just to give you a sense of what the process is for, uh, potential violations being reported to DHS. Don't know if that helps, but just thought I'd offer that for you, thanks.
No, I appreciate that, and so I guess the wonder becomes then, do people go to the, uh, State of California website and Google that information? I just keep hearing concerns, and I'd like to be able to, um, direct folks to, you know, what can they do if they have questions about health and safety, or concerns about health and safety? I'd like to make it as easy as possible for them to report any of those concerns. And I am not sure that the city has a role in that, uh, but if we do, I'd like to know what it is and how we can help.
No, perhaps, uh, uh, I think Director Graham's on, uh, um, the panel right now. Um, I know that, uh, we've talked about, uh, this specific matter, uh, he's been able to access the DHS website and, um, get information, so, uh, you know, perhaps Director Graham could weigh in on, on at least the information that he's able to access.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've certainly been able to go on the website and, and identify locations where you can, um, they have the number that, uh, that Mayor Edding was talking about, uh, where there's complaints, um, I did come across that previously. Um, I think there's also an email address, um, that you can lodge complaints with, and they, um, and I don't know that I saw anything really beyond that, but, um, that is what I did see.
But that wouldn't be something you would post on the Morro Bay city site per se, it would be folks would go straight to the state website, um, to put in their, register their concerns if they had any with safety and welfare?
Certainly, I mean, and then they can, and folks can always contact the city, you know, I mean, we're, we're, we're here and, and we could, you know, we, we often get, you know, complaints that don't relate to things that are, you know, like municipal code related, general plan related, zoning code related, and they might relate to the state or the county or things like that. So, I mean, we would be able to assist with that if they contacted us. Um, uh, I, I get a lot of calls that, you know, that are, that are related to issues that are, you know, outside the city realm, but really live in the county or state realm, and able to get folks in contact with people pretty easily, um, you know, or at least try to get the numbers or the website or what have you, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty regular occurrence.
For what it's worth, Councilmember Addis, um, you know, I, I haven't, uh, um, you know, been on the DHS website, uh, really to, you know, review, um, their accessibility and all, but I just did a Google search, and, you know, DHCS.ca.gov, I mean, Department of Health, um, and, you know, it's, the websites are there, I mean, um, but
There's an online form, Chris, to do, there's an eight hundred, uh, twenty-four hour, eight hundred hotline, uh, that you can call, um, and you can also email, there are three options basically to use on that, yeah. I'm on the site, too.
Well, I, I appreciate all of you, and I have seen Scott, um, help folks get to the right place, but I feel better knowing that, um, one could simply Google DHS and get the information, and I hope that folks that are concerned about health and welfare will take that piece of this, uh, very seriously and, uh, know what the resources are and where to register those, um, those concerns if needed. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Barton, questions, please?
Are we muted, Councilmember Barton?
Let's see.
We can hear you.
How about, how about that?
Yes, that's fine.
Yay, okay. I wanted to thank both of the attorneys. I really, really appreciate having your expert advice with us tonight. Um, Elena, that was so helpful, the, the breadth of your experience. Um, you, you answered questions I hadn't even thought to ask yet and it, I really appreciated that. We've had, of course, as you know, a great deal of interest from the community and it just is, it's great to have your, um, the two of you, your depth of experience. So, um, I wanted to thank you very much for that. My questions have kind of followed along with the other members, so I don't have additional questions, but I just wanted to thank you very much for being with us tonight to help us make this decision.
You're very welcome. Glad to be here and glad to help answer any of the questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. With that, um, I'll go ahead and open up the, uh, public hearing and ask, um, our city clerk if she will promote, um, Ms. Ashley Smith, um, the appellant, um, and make sure that she has access to her mic and that we can see her if that's possible. Ms. Smith, are you there?
Um, Anthony, can you help us, um, provide Ms. Smith with audio, please?
Absolutely. Um, I can, you know, or I can bring over to panelists, so you wanted video as well. Am I correct on that?
If possible, yes.
Okay, please stand by. Okay, so I have moved Ashley Smith over to the panelist.
Ms. Smith, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
We sure can. I just wanted to welcome you on behalf of the council. Thank you for the extensive information that you have, um, supplied to, to us. I'm sure that, um, in the comments I made earlier, I got the opportunity to review all of your information. I very much appreciate it, um, as I'm sure the other council members do. Um, we're going to give you 10 minutes, um, to go ahead and, uh, present your issues.
Okay.
And, uh, I will reserve time later if there are any specific council questions for you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, good evening, City Council, and thank you for being here tonight. My name is Ashley Smith and I am the applicant at the appeal. I'd like to start by saying, although my name is on the paperwork for the appeal, I am speaking for many concerned residents in Morro Bay. I'd also like to clear the air and let the owners of the proposed facility and any other resident or city employee know, contrary to a rumor that's been circulating, I do not own nor work for any business involved with drug and alcohol addiction. I have been a stay-at-home mom for over 13 years and many residents can attest to that. Now that we've cleared that up, let's continue. My grounds for this appeal are supported by the Housing Accountability Act 65589.5. Under the state law tab in your binder, it reads, "The housing development project would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety unless the project is disapproved or approved upon the condition that the project be developed at a lower density." As used in this paragraph, a specific adverse impact means a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete. Last planning committee, the partner of the city attorney, Elena, mentioned that to prove a specific adverse impact would have to be done by documentation, i.e., articles, police logs, licensing, and so forth from other facilities that the applicant is associated with. Counsel, the local residents have found an alarming amount of documentation that proves that this facility will have an adverse impact, not only to the residents of Morro Bay but to the potential clients as well. I'd like to go over your staff report. On page two, under Analysis, city staff says the facility expects to provide housing and services up to 26 individuals. This is an incorrect answer. Under the city tab Info in the binders provided to you, you'll find documentation printed off the city website that says this facility will actually serve 27 to 40 residents, not 26. On page four of the staff report, under number one, the staff responded, "Staff and Planning Commission have not been presented with any such evidence in regards to public safety as outlined in the Housing Accountability Act." This is an incorrect answer. I myself have sent documentation to city employees, including Nancy Hubbard, providing evidence dating back to February of 23rd this year. However, this evidence was left out of the staff report. Further on, in the response, it reads, "The city does not search for ways in which a project can be denied. However, it was not proven that the project meets all the requirements in the Housing Accountability Act," which was the substance of the appeal question. Uh, on the same page, under number two, staff responded, "Experiences of other facilities and other communities does not provide relevant information for the review and approval of this project." According to the city attorney, she stated last meeting, "This information is relevant and can be taken into consideration for the approval or disapproval." The staff answer in this number is very conflicting between Nancy Hubbard and the city attorney, so I am asking for further clarification as to whom is correct. The staff response goes on to say, "Review of the housing application should not be subject to requirements or conditions that are also not imposed on other residential projects. While I understand that city planning and city admin cannot ask these types of questions to the applicants, however, since the project was appealed and specific questions were asked, then the city has a duty and the right to research and gather such information." But as we see this answer, in this answer and throughout the staff report, no effort was made to gather such research. I'd now like to jump to page 112 of the report. The applicant reports under 2A, they have no affiliation with California Behavioral Treatment Center. However, in your binder, under California Behavioral tab, you will see the printout of Joyce's NPI number in association with the facility. Further in the binder, under the same tab, you will find Joyce's employment record provided by InstaCheckmate. It lists Joyce's place of work at 501 East Harvard Street, which is the exact address of the California Behavioral Treatment Center. Based on this evidence, Joyce Kishar does have an affiliation with this facility and it is important because Joyce is the current owner of the roadway inn. The response by the applicant is untrue and later in this meeting, you will hear more findings about this specific facility from another resident. You have the document that proved Joyce's affiliation, so why is the applicant lying? The next facility, Absolute Control Counseling Center, with an NPI number issued to Organe Snardos, whom is the point of contact for the Morro Bay project. It was claimed by the applicant to have no affiliation with. A YouTube link was sent to city council, city attorney, and Nancy Hubbard that showed a YouTube video with the Absolute Control Transitional Counseling Center logo in the background and Mr. Snardos speaking about the facility and treatment. Again, the applicant lied about their affiliation with this facility and later in this meeting, you will hear more findings about this specific facility from another resident. Under your Absolute Control tab in your binder, you will find more evidence of public safety concerns. Most of these findings have been emailed to city staff during the course of this proposal. All the evidence proves Mr. Snardos' affiliation with the facility, so why is the applicant lying about it? The next facility, First Responders First, applicant response was no affiliation. However, if you look in your binder, under the tab of FRF, you will see an email from Nancy Hubbard to my state, to myself, stating that the applicant does have affiliation. Under the same tab in your binder, you will find more evidence of public safety concerns, including current lawsuits, a testimonial of an ex-client, insurance fraud investigations, and an ongoing state licensing investigation. Most of these findings have been emailed to city staff during the course of this proposal. Justin Frankian is the name listed on the NPI number for the Morro Bay facility. He is also the father, the father of Alexander Frankian, who is mentioned in the Mountain Enterprise article under this tab, all proving their affiliation. Again, why is the applicant lying? The applicant also says they have no affiliation with building unique alternative, youth alternatives, excuse me. However, if you look in your binder, under this tab, you'll find a newspaper article and a nonprofit that lists Brian Derbortanian as the in care of name, thus proving his affiliation as client and also owner. Another lie, Brian DeBortanian is whom applied for the change of usage for the Morro Bay facility. My last point, on page 114, the applicant answered that there will be, not be any clients from the diversion program. However, during the planning committee, committee meeting, Mr. Snardos mentioned that the Morro Bay facility will have clients from the diversion program. Here is another conflicting answer. City council, based on my extensive research on this proposal and the businesses that the applicant are associated with, there is grave cause and documentation to prove the public safety concerns and therefore grounds to deny this project according to the Housing Accountability Act. You now hold the documentation in your hands to deny this facility. The residents have spoken. Based on the emails under the Project Correspondence tab, 106 residents are against it, five are for it, and 11 didn't make a clear stance. It appears that the applicants are trying to come through the back door to get this facility open. They lied about their affiliation with any other facilities. They lied about me and my so-called profession. They lied about their intent to open this facility, which Brian claimed to have done because of the pandemic, when actually they had an NIP number for this facility back in August of 2019. This is documented in your pine, in your binder. Why are the applicants lying? What do they have to hide? The state is forcing towns to make room for these facilities. However, the state does not provide additional staffing or oversight to make sure these facilities are run correctly. That responsibility will fall on the owners, who have already proven themselves to be dishonest, and it will also fall upon our small fire and police department. You have the evidence, you can deny this project outright. We have the state law to support us. Please listen to the residents and deny this project or at least take a pause and postpone your vote until you've been able to review all the evidence. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Smith. I appreciate you being here. If you'll stand by, we're going to hear now from the applicant and in case there are any council questions, um, in a little while, I hope you'll be available to address those. Thank you again. So next, um, I'm going to invite up, um, the applicant, if the applicant is here, Mr. Brian Derbortanian and/or, um, any of the representatives associated with the applicant's project.
Can you see Brian with his hand raised?
Yeah, um, would you like me to move him over to panelists?
Yes, if you could, uh, promote him and, we can see him and also, uh, get some voice, that'd be great.
I have promoted Brian to, let's see here.
Brian, you should be able to unmute yourself and turn on your video now.
Hello?
Welcome, Mr. Derbortanian.
Yes, Brian, Brian Derbortanian, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and you also have 10 minutes, sir. Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. Um, we must have had to see you though, can?
Yeah, I don't have a camera, I apologize.
Okay, go ahead, we can, that's just fine.
For technical questions, most definitely, Mr. Snardos will be more appropriate to answer, but I will answer to the appellant's questions regarding, uh, Joyce, regarding my, um, affiliation or non-affiliation with all the entities, uh, Ms. Smith or Mrs. Smith mentioned. Um, it is apparent that she has a lot of misinformation and she, uh, she's reaching out and it's all false. Um, 99% of her findings are baseless and has no base in any, uh, of her findings, meaning, uh, Joyce's APN number is, um, never been used or been used, but it's been, uh, discontinued since 2015 after, uh, she closed the pharmacy. And she has no affiliation with any of the entities she mentioned. She's been a housewife since then. She's been raising, um, twins, that's what we called, uh, Twins Bay. Has no affiliation with any of the facilities she's mentioning. Uh, Smith, uh, regarding, uh, unique youth, unique youth, I helped, I helped the police department to prepare, uh, and submit for a nonprofit and we were successful. After that, I handed it over to, uh, the President, Secretary, and Treasurer, and I stepped back. Since, um, since 2008, I had no affiliation. I had, although my name was there, I did only form, applied for the nonprofit status and that was it. There was nothing else. Um, my, uh, surprise also comes when, um, the citizens or close by citizens of, um, the facility which we're planning to do threatened the employees through other means. If the city council does not take care of, uh, deny, they will take the matter in their hands to stop this project, meaning they're buying weapons and all whatnot, which is scary and is threatening, uh, to the employee, to the, to the motel and the residents and, or the guests. It's very alarming. If this kind of behavior is available to the city residents, are very, very alarming to us as a business. Um, to offer a solution to the city, we will respectfully offer to the city state licensing compliance reports, notice of any disciplinary records or actions might, uh, come up and will be more than happy to give to the city and, uh, they will be, it will be available all the time. I would like, if Mr. Snardos is available, to have some comments.
That would be fine, the, the original 10 minutes will still apply. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Addis, are you there, sir?
Mayor?
I see you to be elevated.
I'm gonna move him over to panelists, just a moment.
Thank you.
And there's about six and a half minutes remaining.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, he should be moved over to, uh, the panelist's side, so we should have audio and video from this gentleman.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Snardos. Is he muted, Dana?
Yes, he is. Mr. Snardos, are you able to unmute yourself and turn on your camera? Perfect, thank you.
There you go, welcome.
Good afternoon, uh, good afternoon, everybody. Uh, I'm Mr. Brian Snardos and, uh, helping Mr. Brian Derbortanian to prepare his licensing and to develop the program he's going to run, uh, at the Morro Bay facility. Well, um, first of all, I will start with Ms. Smith, I think her name was, uh, I think she's Miss, uh, she's confusing the meaning of the word applicant and not applicant either Joyce, but Mr. Brian Derbortanian is the applicant. And during the last meeting, I told specifically that I'm the executive director of Absolute Control Transitional Counseling Center, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization with no ownership and nobody with a financial interest in it. And I specifically stated that I'm the executive director of that facility. However, Mr. Derbortanian has no affiliation whatsoever. director of that facility. However, Mr. Derbortanian has no affiliation whatsoever with Absolute Control and never had. When in regards to diversion program, I think you have to suggest to go deeper and look what's a diversion program means. And I specifically stated, and I'm stating it again, that there will be no diversion program at Morro Bay, nor AB 109 clients coming from any state prison or any federal prison that come in just to live there as a transitional housing in lieu of incarceration. That's not going to happen because Morro Bay facility, which we're going to operate, it will be ASN 3.1 diagnosis, which means in order to qualify, to bring that facility and to receive the services, the person has to be a substance abuse addict, who's going there going, or is just finishing his detox process, and he's starting working on his treatment to start the process of recovery from the addiction. That's the group with the clientele we're going to work with. And there was also mentioned earlier, some Mr. Smith, and I don't know why they all have the family name Smith, but they're not related. It could be possible. Don't get me wrong. But he said that he's a fire department, fire marshal, or works for the fire department. Then as a fire marshal, he should know that if the Morro, if that facility stays as a motel, as it is right now, just you don't have to dig deeper to find out that most overdoses, most arrests, most abusers are in the motels, because that's the facilities where the substance abuse addicted persons using, to use their drugs to be away of the, of the view and not to be arrested. So the other question, I really deeply understand the concerns of the people living there, but I really understand it. But I wanted to assure you that Mr. Derbortanian said that we're going to provide all the findings, department, state department will provide to us, all the concerns and everything. You can always ask us, and we're going to respond it, and we're going to show everything to you. We don't have nothing to hide. And also in regards to the twenty-six, the number twenty-six, it was mentioned by Ms. Smith, it's twenty-seven to forty-two. Obviously, you should look at motel occupancy numbers. However, I'm stating, and later on, when we get into the process of licensing, I will show you, I will show you also the proof that we're applying only for the twenty-six bed facility, which means only twenty-six persons at the max, only twenty-six patients at the max, will be at the premises at any given time. And also, priorly, I think somebody mentioned that it's going to pile up another number of residents in the Morro Bay. That's not, that's not true either, because whoever comes from the other, from the other places, from Southern California to get treatment, they will go mostly back to their home. And whoever comes from Morro Bay to get help with the Morro Bay facility will go back home anyway. So there's not going to, there's not going to be pileup of any type. As far as emergency services, because we are ASN 3.1 diagnosis criteria facility, that means we're obligated to have a doctor on the staff and to have a therapist on the staff, which means only in really emergency situations, which let's say somebody got injured, or something, that only then the emergency services will be involved. The rest of it will be taken care of our staff, which will consist of the doctors, like I said, therapists, counselors, and trained technicians, who are all CPR and first aid certified and trained. So only the very hard emergency situations, of course, we will use an emergency services as every other person does. I don't remember anything else that was coming up to the thing, but if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, and I'm here to clarify for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nardos. I appreciate that. And at later ten minutes, we'll go ahead and move back to the council. If you'll just be on standby, Mr. Nardos, in case there are any detailed questions, we might be getting back to you. So thank you so much. With that, we have heard from both the appellant and the applicant. I am now going to open up public comment. This is public comment for item B dash two on the agenda. Only this item. Our public comment is now open. And Anthony, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. I'll start with three minutes. I don't know how many people we have in the queue, but I will allow, at least for now, three minutes. So first, public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I see Susan McSee with her hand raised. I'm going to go unmute Susan. Susan, you are unmuted.
Welcome, Susan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Susan McDaniel. I have lived in Morro Bay for thirty-five years, was employed at the Men's Colony for twenty years, and have been a licensed marriage and family therapist for over fifteen years. With regard to the current issue, I also worked as a San Luis Obispo County Mental Health Crisis Intervention Team member for several years. Varied work experiences have given me the opportunity to witness firsthand the impact drug and alcohol issues can have on individuals and their community. I have been an advocate for mental health and drug and alcohol treatment for decades. I wholeheartedly support effective professional treatment for these issues. While the location on North Main and the voluntary setting present major issues, others speaking tonight will address those. My concerns with regard to this project revolve around the lack of clear, complete, and consistent information from the Morro Bay Recovery Incorporated team. Since several of the principals have previously been associated with similar projects, I'm at a loss to understand their reticence. If their goal is to provide a service to the community, I would expect them to be more transparent and forthcoming in communicating the details of their qualifications, experience, plans regarding staffing, treatment modalities, and the policies of their facility, while making clear their goals for clients, assessment, treatment options, and evaluation of treatment effectiveness. Our success in attempting to gain this information has been uneven, and when we do get answers from different individuals connected to the project, they often contradict one another. I'm particularly concerned that their submitted tentative treatment schedule allows for up to two hours of treatment per day, when the state oversight of this type of facility by DHCS requires twice that, four hours a day, and must include individual therapy. The omission of individual therapy is a major error. In addition, their materials make no mention of the other services that DHCS requires, namely, application criteria, client screening, code of conduct, medication-assisted treatment procedures, drug screening policy, and so on. Their schedule also fails to include requisite service references regarding client access to social workers, educational opportunities, vocational counseling, job info, legal services, and so on.
Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I see R. Tyler Smith with their hand raised.
Okay.
Okay, R. Tyler Smith, you should be unmuted.
Yeah, hello. Have you got me?
Yes.
Hey, I just wanted, sorry, I didn't realize I could comment in this timeframe. I commented earlier, but I wanted to just bring up one more thing. You have ample evidence of safety concerns that have been provided to you guys. You have binders in your hand. They've been emailed to the city. This is absolutely legitimate evidence that can, you know, give you the ability to vote no to this. The, you know, drastic outreach from the community is telling you, please don't vote for this. We've given you the documentation. You have the evidence. You have the ability to say no. Apparently, other cities have also been able to vote no on this. Orange County, it was spoken about earlier, they were able to fight this and win. I believe that the city of Morro Bay has ample evidence and the ability to say no to this facility. Please listen to us and vote no. And don't, you know, let's fight the state with the evidence that we have, and listen to the people of the city that are urging you to vote no. Just, I'm hoping that you guys do the right thing, and you have all of the power to do it. You have all the evidence to do it, and I'm urging you to vote no. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you've already given public comment during the general public comment time on this issue, please allow others to give public comment that haven't had the opportunity. Thank you. Next public comment, Anthony?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I see Tim Gailey with his hand up.
Okay, welcome, Tim.
All right, you should be unmuted, Tim.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, Tim, welcome.
Yeah, thank you all for, for working so, so hard on this project. I know it means a lot to the community. I know you've got a lot of support from our community members that are opposed to it, but I know you also have to do your job, and I appreciate the hard work you guys all do. My stance and my hope is that you will vote no, purely on the fact that the public is relying on you to keep our children safe in this community. And to me, it's just too close to the schools. I don't know the exact distance measurement, but I'd like to know from the edge of the property to the edge of the high school, what that exact distance is and what the state requirements are. So I thank you for your time, and I'd like to get that answered before we finalize this vote. Once again, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left on the queue.
Okay. Thank you for that. With that...
Now I see four or five just got raised, so I'm going to go ahead and unmute some of these, some of these folks here. Malia, I am unmuting you.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me to...
Welcome, Malia.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I, I just feel like, I know that a lot of this is wanting us to have the evidence and have the proof. And I've noticed throughout this whole time, this whole pandemic homelessness issue, we've made choices and made decisions in the interest of hopefully helping people. And looking around, I look at the library in Los Santos, it is overrun and unsafe for children to even go to the park. And I love what the gentleman said about the location to the school, both schools, Delmar and Morro Bay High School, both kids walking right by, going to both places. And I agree that we have to put our kids' safety and into, into play here and think of them. I know that probably a fence is an issue. I know that, that fence, we have regulations on fence sizes in the city of Morro Bay. Also, I love the comment about they have zoning, they make zoning rules for a reason. You know, we don't put certain things next to each other. Let's, let's hopefully be a thoughtful decision about what goes next to what. And I hope you guys will vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Rich Donald with his hand up.
Okay. Welcome, Rich.
Hello. Hi, are you hearing me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Rich Donald. I'm the general manager currently of the Roadway Inn in Morro Bay. Part of the commentary that I was most disturbed by is people talking about how they're concerned for public safety. There is a John Hopkins Magazine 2016 issue which shows that there is no increase in crime from drug treatment centers versus any other similarly sized business within fourteen hundred feet of the center itself. Now, there is an increase in crime in some other businesses in the neighborhood. We don't ask how far away the local Chevron or Lucky Seven liquor stores are from the high school, or how far the Delmar liquor store is from the high school, but your chances of getting murdered, assaulted, raped, or killed at those locations is thirty-one to thirty percent, thirty-eight percent higher there than it would be standing in front of our facility. Yet I don't hear anybody complaining that their children have to walk in front of Spencer's. So first thing is, this is not going to be an unsafe facility. The second thing I'll say is that since I got here in Morro Bay, the first week, I had somebody, the applicant's mother, came to my hotel and told me that just because a drug addict or addict alcoholic hasn't been caught or convicted yet doesn't mean they're not child molesters. I didn't watch the Morro Bay, the Morro Bay butcher, where they told me that other people were gone down there saying that we were opening up a facility specifically to treat pedophiles. So if we're talking about the crazy rumors running around town, they're not the rumors that are coming from our facility, but these are the kind of things that are being told to the regular residents on the street, going store to store. These things are untrue. This is going to be a JCO monitored facility, which means that if you have a complaint with the way it's running, if you believe that there's a patient safety concern, you go to JCO, you file a complaint, and they pull the license of the operation of the facility. You don't even need to go to the Department of Health. You just go to JCO, and they send an investigator out, and if they find any evidence that the patient's safety was, was in danger, they shut down the administration of the facility. They can replace the entire administration. Someone else commented that they had heard that there was no supervision at night. There absolutely will be supervision at night. I've never heard of a medical facility where there isn't supervision at night. I just want to say that I am here, that if people have questions for me about, you know, the transition from the hotel into the treatment facility, I can answer those questions. I'm also available if anybody wants to come down to the hotel and ask about, you know, what the owner or Mr. Nardos's intentions are. I'm versed on those. And I've tried to leave my door open for anybody that has a question. I just hope that these kind of crazy wild rumors that are getting spread around can stop, and that my staff can go back to not worrying about walking down the street and what might happen to them if they go to the local hardware store where they're telling them that the residents behind us are buying guns and saying they're going to take care of the problems themselves if the, if the city council doesn't do it. I sure hope that was just an idle threat, and that these kinds of...
Thank you, Mr. Donald. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Natalie P. with her hand raised. Okay, Natalie, you should be unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Natalie.
Hi, thank you. I was just calling in tonight. My name's Natalie Penny, and I have heard a lot of people's comments of just, you know, different opinions. My opinion, being a mother, yes, I don't, I would vote no for this one. Just in concern for, it's just right in the family neighborhood. It's, you know, not the right location for this. I am in support of these facilities, but not in a family neighborhood, not like children's schools, and I don't see the benefit from that. And thank you. I just, I wouldn't want to see this go forward. So if you could listen to the words, that'd be great.
Thank you. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor. I see Nathan Parks with his hand raised.
Okay.
Okay, Nathan, you should be unmuted.
Yes, hello. Welcome. So I think I've seen a lot of really good comments, and a lot of it's been addressed. And I'm on the side of the no camp. And one of the things I think that's important to note is that the idea that we would have to have documentation for a facility in the town in order for that to be considered applicable documentation isn't, isn't reasonable because there isn't another facility. And so how is a town supposed to, town or city supposed to come to determination that there is going to be an impact, negative impact, without going into other towns and using that information? And so I think that the information that Ashley Smith has provided would be adequate to defend a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Diane Walling with her hand raised.
Okay. Welcome, Diane.
Let's see here. What happened to... Okay, I do not know what happened to Diane. Uh, okay, I do not know what happened to Diane. She...
Okay, let's go to the next and see if she comes back.
Uh, you know what, Mayor? I do not see any raised hands after that.
If you see Diane's hand go up, I'll readmit her. Thank you.
Copy, that will do.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, I will go ahead and close public comment. Bring it back to the council. Mr. Nardo, if you could turn your camera off, that would be great. Thank you. I don't know. Yeah, there, thanks. Appreciate that very much. Thank you. With that, that closes our public hearing on item B-2. I will ask council members if you have any further questions for either the appellant or the applicant. Seeing no hands raised, I'm trying to get a view and no further questions, it sounds like, from council. I will go ahead and dismiss the appellant and the applicant and thank them both for being here this evening for our public hearing. Chris, do you have a comment, sir?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to encourage the applicant to stay. If there were any voluntary conditions that the applicant might agree to on the permit, then it'd be best practices to have the applicant agree on the record.
Great. Thanks for that, Chris. And that would either be Mr. Durvartanian, and I probably am saying that wrong and I apologize, or, well, that or Mr. Nardos, just being available. Thanks.
Yes, I'm available.
Thank you. Okay, if there are questions, we will get back to you. Thank you so much. So, maybe I'll go ahead and start. Thanks, council, for weighing in with some really excellent questions. Obviously, this is a highly emotional issue for the community. One that is fraught with, I think, a lot of potential misunderstanding from numerous different parties. I'm not pointing any fingers. But it is a fairly complex issue that, in my opinion, has been well-vetted by staff. And I want to thank Nancy Hubbard and Scott Graham again for all of the work that you've done on this issue over the last several months and your extensive staff report and your follow-up with regard to questions that were asked and were addressed. I really appreciate that. I also want to thank again the appellant. I know that Ms. Smith spent a tremendous amount of time collecting information and providing us with information. And I want to thank the applicant for their submission of the project as well. I'm very appreciative of our legal staff, our city attorneys. I found the explanation extremely helpful from Elena Gerley regarding the government code 65589.5, specifically which outlines supportive housing and the ability to either deny or not to deny. I also appreciate the clarification on what are considered a protected class of individuals, which the patients of the facility fall into. And I was found very helpful, your explanation, Elena, of the issue of potential litigation from the city if there are certain actions taken that discriminate against disabled or protected class individuals. I also want to thank the community. I understand the concerns about what potentially may occur, and I use the word "potentially" on purpose because the evidence with regard to this facility, basically, there is no evidence because it's not open. Our job as a city council is to determine legally what's appropriate or inappropriate, take recommendations directly into consideration from our planning commission, who are really the zoning and land use experts with regard to these projects, and our staff, who have the expertise to lend to those policymakers as they set direction for the council. In looking at this, I also want to highlight something that I think is very important, and that is the fact that these types of facilities with this type of diagnostic criteria that Mr. Nardos specifically referred to, the DSM Code 311, these facilities are licensed by the Department of Healthcare Services, not by the city of Morro Bay. All of the standard operating procedures, staffing ratios, facility requirements with regard to common rooms, staffing ratios, types of staffing, et cetera, are vetted by the Department of Healthcare Services, under which there is a large volume of requirements that a facility like this must meet. And then there is also continuous ongoing monitoring via complaint systems of any complaints that are lodged. It's mandatory by law for DHS to evaluate and make determinations about any significant or any concerns that are raised by the public via the phone-in system or the online reporting system for complaints that we referred to earlier. And so I don't want to discount how extensive this licensing process and procedure is. And before the facility can even open the doors, all of the requirements must be met of the standards in order to do that. In addition, the applicant has indicated that this will be a joint-commission accredited facility. That adds another layer of protection and safety and regulatory oversight for such a facility. This is something that a facility like this doesn't have to do, but voluntarily engages an accrediting organization to oversee and also they must meet the standards of the joint commission, which are very onerous and very stringent. So, in my opinion, there's an additional layer there that, of security with regard to the operation, when and if this facility becomes joint-commission accredited. I also understand the concerns of the community with regard to potential disproportionate use of certain city services that may be impacted. We have a number of ordinances in place for any type of business actually that operates. And I am satisfied that we will be able to protect the community with regard to ensuring that services are not overutilized and that there'll be a reporting mechanism as there could be for any entity if there's an overutilization of city services disproportionately for these kinds of entities. For all of those reasons, I support the planning commission's recommendation to deny the appeal and uphold their decision and also the director's approval of the minor use permit, allowing the change in use to supportive housing in compliance with the requirements of the Morro Bay Municipal Code by adopting Resolution Number 29-21. That is a motion, and I would like to add two conditions that I think will help protect our community and address the issues that have been raised by a fair number of folks in the community. The two conditions I would like to add via the city council would be to have the applicant mandated to timely provide copies to the city of any reporting required by the California Department of Health Services, provided that any information identifying residents of the facility, any private medical information, or information protected from disclosure by law shall be redacted. That would be condition number one that I would add from the council. The second condition I would request of the applicant is that the applicant will provide the city with notice of any findings of violation or disciplinary action taken by the California Department of Healthcare Services against the facility within 30 days of receiving a determination by the department. And those would be the two additional conditions that I would like to add. And that formally would be my motion to move the staff recommendation with the two additional conditions being placed on the applicant if the applicant will voluntarily agree to that. So that is my motion.
That was a good motion.
Okay, so we do have a motion by Mayor Hitting, second by Councilmember Heller.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Chris, thank you.
Well, best practices, my understanding is that the applicant would be willing to agree to those conditions on the record. But I think, again, for best practices, if the applicant could log back into Zoom and agree on the record to those, then that would be the proper way to proceed.
So, can we promote the applicant back, Dana?
Yes, I'm online.
Okay, great. Would you agree to those conditions?
Yes, thank you, your honourable mayor. Yes, we agree to those two conditions stated.
Thank you very much. And Chris, is that satisfactory?
Yes, and my understanding is that those two conditions would be added to... And Director Graham, correct me if I'm wrong on this. They would be added to the minor use permit as, under conditions of approval, they would be added as city council conditions. And that would be amended to the minor use permit. And we just had agreement from the applicant that the applicant would agree to those conditions. Director Graham, is that proper for how we put that into the minor use permit?
That's correct. That's what we would place it. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you. So we do have a motion and a second, and I will open it up to any other council members who may want to comment on the issue before asking for a roll call vote. Thank you.
And Mayor, this is Anthony from AGP. I just wanted to let you know that Diane Walling did rejoin and she did raise her hand a bit ago. She was the individual that we were not able to bring in back for the public comment.
Right.
Is it too late?
Well, actually, we're now in the motion phase, so it's pretty far along. But, you know, we're a community that respects our public comment. So, Chris, would it be okay if I just took a public comment?
Yes, and you also could formally just reopen the public hearing to take one more comment and then close it after that. So it would be part of the record.
Thank you. I think that's the heart of this council. So let me reopen the public hearing and allow Ms. Walling her comment. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. I see... Okay. Okay. You know, Mayor, I really apologize. I brought her up to the top here. I have lowered her hand. I tried to unmute her and she has disappeared again. So I am terribly sorry.
That's okay. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council. We do have a motion and a second. And I will ask for any other council member comments at this time, if anybody'd like to speak. Seeing no hands or hearing no voices, I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mayor, I apologize. I didn't catch or hear who seconded the motion.
That was Councilmember Heller.
Hi, I'm sorry. It's Ashley Smith again. I actually have had my hand raised.
No, the public comment is closed. So we have a motion and a second, and I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Addis? Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Hitting?
Yes.
Motion carries by them.
Thank you very much for your significant time in vetting this issue. I appreciate it. And that brings us to item C, our first and only business item this evening. This is a discussion of revenue opportunities and needs for the Harbor Fund. And I believe we have Mr. Andrewsby and also Mr. Collins. So, Mr. Andrewsby?
Yes, good evening.
Or Mr. Collins?
Mr. Mayor and council, appreciate the time. I am going to share my screen if I can figure out the technology. Don't do this a lot. A little PowerPoint presentation. It was part of the public comment that we had posted today. So, as you stated, we've got a discussion of some revenue opportunities and needs for the Harbor Fund that the Harbor Advisory Board looked at. We went with the Harbor Advisory Board last week on June 3rd to review some advisory body input for opportunities and needs for the Harbor Fund and looking to get some direction from you all and some input on possible future Harbor Fund-related revenue generating opportunities and ideas. No fiscal impact at this point. Hopefully, sometime in the future, we'll have some positive fiscal impact with some actions, but we'll see. So the background of this is, as we know, the Harbor Fund is generally balanced, but not sufficiently to provide for the department's backlog, significant backlog of capital needs or to put any significant revenues into the reserves in any of our funds, which is a council policy. So while we're balanced, we're still short on cash for doing all the other stuff we need to do. The last couple of city council goal cycles have included revenue generating ideas and work plans for the Harbor Advisory Board, which are some things we've been working on for a number of years. Last week at the regular meeting, again on the 3rd, item B-3 for the Harbor Advisory Board was to view the list of revenue generating opportunities that we've considered since 2017 and see which we may still consider carrying forward for future consideration and then come up with any new ideas for additional revenue generating opportunities for your consideration. And the staff report from last week's half meeting was included with your staff report for tonight. So of all the revenue generating opportunities on the current list that we've been working on for a couple of years that the Harbor Advisory Board considered, last week they voted to recommend keeping the following on the active list. First one was paid parking on our new name, Barcadaro. We looked at that, I think it was 2019, definitely wasn't 2020, but 2019 we looked at that. Harbor Advisory Board put out a list of recommendations to look at paid parking and to explore a pilot program of paid parking, but also came up with a list of items to consider if paid parking was pursued. The next on the list was for-profit events and activities being subject to some sort of percent or sales obligations. An example of that kind of event would be, you know, there's professional wedding planners that put on weddings on our beaches, that they're doing that and they're doing that for profit. And typically now, they just go through the public air use permit process, so things like that. There's not a lot of those types of activities, but activities like that that are making money on our premises without really paying anything but permit fees. Another item they looked at for approval moving forward is concessionaires for basic beach park, beach or park needs and/or food trucks at The Rock or other locations. Concessionaires for beach needs would be towels, wetsuits, for all types of stuff, those sorts of things. Next item on the list was aggressive seeking of grant opportunities, which I think is something all departments do to a large degree. We're no exception to that. We go largely to the Department of Building and Waterways for a lot of grants, as you know, and also to the Cable Committee. But certainly, there's no, you know, one person in the city because I don't think we're large enough to seek grants on a larger scale. Next item on the list was the city taking over full operation and the revenues of the State Park Marina. This is a complicated one. I could probably spend the next hour not explaining, but we're on operating agreement now with State Parks to redevelop and rebuild that marina. The operating agreement's about 15 years in from when we originally planned on that project. Due to extreme costs of dredging, it largely, you know, went foul because the funding really wasn't there to support it. State Parks has currently put funding aside to do the cost-benefit analysis on that marina and that redevelopment. So hopefully, we'll see something in the next fiscal year on that. And that may guide us where we can potentially go on that. So I kept that down to a minute instead of an hour. Next item on the list was the Harbor Fund receiving a portion of the city's possessory interest tax, transient occupancy tax, or sales tax generated on the waterfront, which traditionally it hasn't been a privy to, but... but recommended in your budget coming up here in the next meeting. I'm grateful that the Harbor Fund is proposed to receive some of the sales tax generated from a new measuring fund, which is great. So that one's kind of cheap in a way. Next one on the list is creation of a special assessment, business improvement, or port district. There's various types of entities that that could be formed under, so those have been batted around by the Harbor Advisory Board in the past. And then the last item on the list was the waterfront RV camping program, which, as you well know, is in a pilot program right now. New opportunities discussed by the Harbor Advisory Board last week. I kind of deem this the spaghetti-throwing-on-the-wall session just to see what sort of ideas people came up with. We've got a couple of new members on the HAB that weren't around in the goal-setting a couple of years ago, which was good. The first item on the list was perform some data and trend analysis of various cost drivers. I'm not sure if there are any candidates out there for cost recovery, additional cost recovery measures. As you know, in 2019, we did a fee recovery study that identified, you know, our primary fee items and are getting them to cost recovery. I've gotten them to cost recovery levels. But the idea here is, are there any other things out there that we haven't considered, sort of lost leaders? Second item on the list was perform more effectively site space vacancy advertising. That might be a function of working closer with the Chamber of Commerce and other business entities to make sure that our name and our brand is getting out there when vacancies come up. Next item on the list was waterfront-specific marketing using 2% of the Harbor Fund's annual revenues with a $2 million budget, roughly $2 million budget. That's about $30,000 per year. Next item on the list was creation of a maritime heritage walk along the waterfront. This is something the Maritime Museum has kind of looked at in the past, and the idea of it being is they take some of their artifacts, maybe some of their larger outdoor-type artifacts, and put them in strategic places along the waterfront, where you go to one and you read about it with the information plaque there, and it points you to the next one down the waterfront, and eventually leads you to the Maritime Museum. And the final one on the list was establishment of a social media, quote-unquote, "social media wall," mural or other attraction on the waterfront. An example of this that I can think of most clearly is the big letters at Pismo Beach is now God at Pismo Beach that people go to with their phones and take their selfie. It's kind of moral rock right now. Most people do that in front of moral rock, but other opportunities to put those on. So with the exception of the first one, most of these are not revenue-generating items in and of themselves per se, but they can be potential revenue drivers. So, fairly short. I think we heard from Councilmember Addis earlier. We spent a good amount of time last week going over these two, going over this item. And should the city council wish to further pursue these, I can see them either being wrapped up into the upcoming goal session, goal-setting session and work plans of the Harbor Advisory Board, where we set the Harbor Advisory Board to work on looking at some of these things, or taken as their own initiatives on their own, this sort of went-ons. So with that, I don't know if the city manager has anything to add. I will stop my sharing.
Mr. Collins, sir, did you have anything to add?
Nothing to add, no. Well done, Eric. Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Hey, Eric, thank you so much. As always, we appreciate your expertise. And thanks so much to the HAB as well and our liaison, Councilmember Addis. We appreciate you and your support of what the HAB is doing. I'll open it up for council questions. Let's go ahead and start with Councilmember Barton. Do you have questions or comments? Councilmember Barton?
Okay.
There you go. We can hear you.
Oh, this is a good list. It's a bigger list than I've seen before. It has a lot of good ideas on it. Off the top of my head, I don't have anything to add to this list. I just, I'm pleased that the HAB continues to bubble up new ideas.
Great. Thank you so much for that. Councilmember Davis, sir, questions or comments?
Yes, I like the initiative and creativity that the HAB and Harbor staff are showing. I wonder if procedurally, we might ask the HAB and Harbor staff to work together on their own work program for next fiscal year to flesh out the revenue programs that they think will work that can then be proposed for the following year's city budget. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Appreciate that. Councilmember Heller, sir, comments or questions?
Yes, questions. Thank you, Mayor. Eric, I think we've talked about this before, but I forget. Do we have a list of the $500,000 per year, which you've estimated for ten years? List of capital projects that support this number? I forget what we said last time we talked about this.
So, yeah, it is approaching about $500,000 a year, the current projections, if we do the capital needs as they are coming up on a lifetime basis over the next ten years. Is that your question?
Yeah, so you have a list of specific projects that need to be implemented over the next ten years?
Yeah, it's a list of all our assets and their lives and the cost to replace or do major refurbishment of them over the next ten years.
Okay, and then I think the 500K also would contribute your operating costs as well. Is that true?
I'm not sure I follow that question.
In other words, is the 500,000 specifically for capital projects?
Yeah, that 500,000 is identified as the need if we were to do those capital projects on the timelines they should be done on.
Okay, so, you know, I agree with the comments that have been made so far. It's a really creative list of things. A lot of great ideas have come out of HAB and also, obviously, from your department as well. So when I look at this, I'm concerned that there seems to be lots of small projects that might generate some money, but also might create a lot more staff time to manage. So when I look at the harbor, when I think about the amount that you need, the $500,000, the option that really kind of dove off the page that interests me the most is the possible creation of a business improvement district or a special assessment district, which would basically generate the funding you need to take care of your capital projects. And you can also pursue many of these smaller revenue projects as well. But I'm concerned that if we do make projects on the list here for you to implement, it's going to become a more expensive implement than it's worth. So those are both kind of my first thoughts about it. But I definitely think we need to do something that will make a sustainable source of revenue so that we take care of these issues over the next ten years and beyond. So that's kind of a question and a comment, if that's okay.
That's fine. We were looking for both, so.
Okay, thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Appreciate that very much. Standing our Harbor Advisory Board liaison for last, Councilmember Addis. Comments and thoughts? Questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Eric, and thank you again to the HAB for the work that they did. I thought there were a lot of creative ideas. But, Eric, we continue to get the correspondence on the RV camping, particularly at Coleman Beach. And could you give an update about the kind of revenue contribution that's making and how the program's going? And I would say, overall, I'd like to know, and then particularly about Coleman Beach.
So overall, as you know, we started, I think our first day was September 10th. We had a little bit of a complete shutdown after the holidays, you know, the COVID. When all the numbers started ramping back up, we did a complete shutdown. It was in mid-January, maybe a little bit into February, then opened back up. Right now, our revenues to date, and this includes some future bookings, because our system allows people to book ahead, but you've got to pay ahead, but we're up to about $80,000 in total revenues to date. Coleman in particular, I don't have the exacts on what the percentage that Coleman contributes of. Coleman is our most popular site and continues to be. The last couple of weekends, we've been booked solid, at least Labor Day weekend, we're booked solid on all of our sites. But Coleman's only, you know, originally started as three, and then we ramped it down to two. So it's our smallest revenue from a sheer mass category generator. But if I had to guess, I'd probably say, I don't want to guess. I don't know. I don't want to throw a number out there and make it sound like one thing or another without knowing. I just don't have those numbers.
And do we see this coming back, RV camping, before September? And we put a pilot in place for a certain amount of time, but there has been a lot of concern. Will there be an update? Or we're waiting until the pilot is over to get an update?
Well, you authorize us to go through September. And so, I mean, I'll leave it up to the city manager and, you know, the mayor to determine when exactly strategically we want to bring it onto the agenda. But I suspect it's probably going to be in August. I don't know that we want to run all the way through September. I think by the time we get summer, well into summer, which is, you know, July into August, we'll have a pretty good feeling on how it is in the crowded months because we missed most of last summer. So we should be able to get it to you before we go all the way through September.
So sometime in the next three months or so, it sounds like?
Yeah. That would be my feeling.
That's all for me, Mayor. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Appreciate your comments. And I'll just start by thanking Eric again. I appreciate you. I've seen that capital needs assessment that you did, and it's extensive and certainly costly in the future. I want to agree with Councilmember Addis and suggest that I will get that agendized in September. I've heard a number of concerns about the Coleman site specifically, and so I think it's important for council to revisit that. And I know Eric will give us an update on the revenues versus expenses on that so that we can truly be prepared to make a good decision on that. But I am concerned about, I'll just say it right now, about that site continuing because of the large number of complaints that I've received from residents concerning just the appearance of that. And, well, I won't say further now, but I will be bringing that back. And I want to echo what Councilmember Heller said. I believe that we need a rather, a quick, large incremental increase in income for the Harbor Department. The unmet capital needs are really the list that Eric has now, which is $500,000 or so a year. But what's missing is potentially a large number of other major infrastructure projects that aren't on the list. And just like our one water plan where we have a capital improvement plan that outlines succinctly what the needs will be for capital improvements over the next forty years. I know that, as a city council, we've agreed to engage either a consultant or a firm to look at our capital improvement needs across the board, including the Harbor Department. I think that will inform us even to a greater degree that there's significant capital needs that we need to jump on and get a large incremental increase in revenues as soon as possible. I said it in the past, I don't think that will ever come from leaseholders. They just are not going to be viable if you suddenly throw large increases to their leases in the future. And so, like Councilmember Heller, I do believe that a potential assessment, not necessarily a large Harvard district, but that a parcel assessment is something that could produce significant revenues for this enterprise fund at very little cost to our community. We have about 5,600 parcels in the community that would pay into that. And if you could imagine each of those parcel owners paying or being assessed $100 a year, that could provide, you know, $560,000 a year for the Harbor Department and meet a large portion of the capital needs. And so, I'll just again echo what Councilmember Heller said. The others may take a lot of staff time and have minimal return or small returns. And I'd really like to go and shore this up, unintended, as quickly as possible because I'm just worried down the line that we're going to run into some major capital issues because of either reventment failures or major failures in the infrastructure in the future. And so, it would be important for me to have the HAB and perhaps staff look at the possibilities of looking at a methodology to get to some kind of parcel assessment, minimal parcel assessment that could, again, contribute large revenues. And so, those are my comments. Eric, appreciate what you're doing. And unless there are any other comments or any questions from staff regarding us, I'm going to open up public comment. Seeing no more, public comment is now open for item B dash, excuse me, C dash one. I was looking at the Advisory Board staff report. Item C dash one, our business item this evening. If you'd like to give public comment on this item, public comment is now open, please. And Anthony, do we have any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I do not see any raised hands in queue.
Thank you for that. I'll go ahead and then have closed public comment, bring it back to council. Any further comments, council? Eric, any questions from us?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further comments or questions, we'll go ahead and close out item C dash one. That brings us to item D, council declaration of future agenda items. Any burning desires for agenda items in the future? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close out item D and adjourn the meeting. Thank you. The next regular meeting, this is the next regular meeting of the city council will be held on Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021, at 5:30 PM via teleconference. However, tomorrow evening at 5:00 PM, there will be a special meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, June 9th, 2021, 5:00 PM, held via teleconference. And so, we will adjourn until then. Have a great evening, be safe, and be well. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
And everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana.